Check, check, mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two.
Ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and community members in St. Louis. Our open session of the August 12th, 2025 board meeting is in session at 6:42 PM.
Ms. Foster?
Present.
Mr. Conover?
Present.
Mr. Hikes?
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marston?
Present.
Ms. Hubbard?
Here.
And Dr. Collins-Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Marston, our Board of Education norms?
St. Louis Board of Education norms, which were adopted on April 9th, 2019. In decision-making, we believe our first priority and greatest concern is the educational welfare of all students in the St. Louis public schools. We align decisions, discussions, superintendent evaluations, district partnerships, budget allocations, et cetera, to the current transformation plan. We demonstrate respect for diversity of thoughts, backgrounds, and experiences, roles, and decisions once they have been made. We embrace healthy debate. We acknowledge board members with differing opinions during discourse in both open and closed session to gain clarity and engage in meaningful dialogues. Professionalism. We demonstrate engagement by thoroughly reviewing the board packet and other documents, arriving on time to meetings and work sessions, remaining on topic during discussions, and respectfully interacting with each other, the superintendent, staff, and all stakeholders. We demonstrate respect for diversity of thoughts, backgrounds, and experiences, and roles. Communication. We demonstrate professionalism and respect for other board members, the superintendent and district staff by adhering to timelines and deadlines outlined in the workflow calendar and any other tasks as assigned. We conduct all official board-related email communications using our at slps.org email accounts. We read and reply to all board emails within 72 hours. We conduct all official board-related phone and text communications using district-issued phones. We check voicemail or return phone calls and texts within 72 hours. We are ambassadors in the community, and as individual concerns or questions arise, we will seek to understand the information and gather pertinent facts in order to direct stakeholders and staff to contact appropriate district personnel. We channel concerns or requests for information through the board president, who will direct those requests to the superintendent in an organized, concise manner. We recognize the importance of proactive communication and agree there will be no surprises. The board president shall be the official spokesperson for the board. The superintendent shall be the spokesperson for the district. Board members who receive requests for board-issue positions shall direct the request to the board president or superintendent. In confidentiality, we respect and maintain the confidentiality of closed-session items and the board's discussion of those items. We refrain from discussing confidential business in public with members of the press or with anyone else not privy to such information. If it is necessary to provide a statement to the public following a closed session, the board president and superintendent will agree on a unified response prior to making the statement.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. Approval of the minute, excuse me, approval of the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for our August 12th, 2025 regular business meeting.
Second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yes, roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins-Adams?
Yes.
The agenda is approved.
Approval of the minutes? Approval of the minutes from the work session, July 22nd, 2025? by the Association of Teacher Educators, or ATE, which was recently awarded to Malanthe Elementary School under the leadership of Dr. Casper. This award, is Dr. Casper in the audience? Dr. Casper, please stand. This award, established in 2005, is a true testament to the dedication and innovation in education. The ATE Give Back to Education Program recognizes schools that demonstrate innovative programming, a strong alignment with ATE's mission, and impactful partnerships with education preparation programs. Selection in a rigorous process with the nominations coming from ATE members and evaluated by a diverse committee. Malanthe and Dr. Casper were particularly noted for creating a culture of learning for students and for encouraging adult staff to enter the field of education. Malanthe Elementary School and their team recently were recently recognized during the 2025 Summer Conference in St. Louis, an event focused on empowering a team of leaders to put a stamp on education. This recognition is a tremendous honor and highlights the incredible work being done in our district to shape the future of education. The honor truly highlights the excellence that our SLPS schools can do and represent. The innovation and deep connection with students that Malanthe Elementary exemplifies is the embodiment of our district's portrait of a graduate in every way. They're preparing our students for all the futures they can possibly dream of, ensuring they have the skills, knowledge, and mindset to succeed in a rapidly changing world. Please join us in congratulating Dr. Casper and the entire Malanthe Elementary School community for this well-deserved recognition. We're incredibly proud. Their achievements and the positive impact that they're making on our students and the broader educational landscape, congratulations. Dr. Barisha Day?
Thank you, and once again, congratulations. Well done, well done. So tonight, I would like to celebrate student achievement in the sciences. So could I have Ms. Lucy? I'm thrilled to share some incredibly exciting news that highlights the exceptional talent and dedication of our students here in St. Louis Public Schools. This summer, one of our very own, Lucy from Metro Academic and Classical High School, participated in Washington University in St. Louis Young Scientists Program. This program, now in its 34th year, offers an intensive research experience for bright, aspiring, young scientists. Lucy spent her summer immersed in a research lab at Wash U, working on independent research project under the guidance of Dr. Kenneth Olson in the Department of Biology. Her research focused on a crucial and timely topic, the evolution of a new form of herbicide resistance in US wheaty rice. This is a significant area of study and real-world implication for agriculture. On July 25, Lucy presented her findings at the Summer Foco Final Symposium. At this time, I'll have Lucy do her presentation. Okay.
All righty.
Let's lean in.
Yes, yes. Hello, everybody. I'll keep this short and sweet, but my name's Lucy Luke-Tomire, and I was a part of the Young Scientists Program at Wash U eight weeks in the summertime, and you apply back in December, and then you go in for an interview, and then you get chosen in April usually. So I had the honor to be on the Danforth Campus doing the Department of Biology, Plant Biology. So I was placed in this, and so I'll do my presentation. I'll do like five minutes, you guys can get on with everything else and get out of here early. That's fine with me, but, so here we go. Another uprising, the evolution of a new form of herbicide resistance in US wheaty rice. So as we all know, rice grows all across the southern United States, but what you may not know is that it's facing a crisis. So Orisa sativa, or just rice in general, there's a weed growing all around it called wheaty rice, which is like a perfect name for it, you would say, but it's competing for space, light, and other resources. So as you can see in this top image, I know it's kind of dark over there, but wheaty rice is growing up and over crops, and it's competing for, like I said, space and light. And then the bottom image there, it's completely folded over, and this is causing $45 million a year lost in the United States because of this. And so farmers are like, oh, my gosh, like, we're losing money. What are we gonna do? So this is where I come in with some of my research here. So back in 2021, there was a cultivar called Maxase, and a cultivar is a non-transgenic cultivar, meaning if you went out into a field of a bunch of just regular rice crop and you sprayed it all with an herbicide, in my case, it's QPE or quizzolophop P ethyl. So they go out there, they spray everything with QPE. Any plant that stays growing means that it's resistant to that herbicide, which makes sense. So you take that plant and you regrow it in your fields as a farmer, and you say, okay, now I can spray my herbicides around, and I know it's killing all the weeds around, but it's not gonna kill my plant. But we found a pattern in past cultivars, this is a newer cultivar, where there's a, the wheaty rice is evolving this resistance, and it's causing competition with the rice. So what we're looking for is if the Maxase allele or the gene in wheaty rice can demonstrate hybridization of resistance. So we're thinking after just two field seasons, is there gene flow between the Maxase and the wheaty rice, and is it measurable and detectable on this geographic scale? So basically, if you're interested, which you're probably not at all, but it's okay, I understand. So Maxase rice carries an amino acid substitution from serine to glycine at position 2096. Basically, so this is how it's actually mutated chemically, but you can see right, oh, gosh, right there, it says CHR5. So it's chromosome five at the 13th million base pair sequence, and so then it goes for a certain amount of time, and that's basically how it works. Yeah. So what we did, my mentor went out all the way to the fields of Missouri, Louisiana, Arkansas, went out into the fields, collected 199 samples of this rice. They take the panicle, which is the part with like the seed on it, and it's like reproductive, and they take it back to the Wash U greenhouse where we grow them all up in these pots. So then I go into the greenhouse, and I'm like, all right, I'm ready to take off my leaves. So I cut the leaves off, you freeze it with liquid nitrogen, you grind it up, then you extract the DNA from it, and then you put it in something called a thermocycler. And the thermocycler is something that has different temperatures, and it's allowing that gene that you're trying to focus on to like reproduce over and over again till it's big enough where you can see it on this next step, which is gel. I won't go into what that is, but essentially, you're looking for an image at the end. So we use two different primers. One is susceptible. This is looking for, is the herbicide, is this plant herbicide susceptible? And then the resistant, is it resistant? So the results. One single wheaty rice from Pembroke County, Missouri, so shout out to Missouri for, you know, for all of that hard work, carries this resistance allele in a homozygous form, meaning that there's two resistant allele, or two resistance. So basically, in picture A there, you can see that at that position, there's no mark. So at 400 base pairs, which is the length of the allele, there's no susceptible allele, but in picture B, there is a resistance allele, meaning that that plant is herbicide resistant. It evolved resistance. So we're suggesting that this means that there's crop-to-weed hybridization and a presence of gene flow. Boom. Okay, so there are the results of the experiment. We can see that there is a recurring pattern. Past cultivars like Clearfield and Provizia have had the same thing, and I've just proven that myself, too. So there is a recurring pattern of cultivars where there is evolved resistance of wheaty rice, and that's hurting the crops. And what we can say is that we can go to agricultural stakeholders in the future, and we can talk to them about avoiding pitfalls of herbicide resistance and evolution of wheaty rice in the future. And then this was my lab, it's a very small lab, but thank you guys for having me today, and I'm sorry if I took up any more of your time than needed, but thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you.
So as you can see, this achievement is a testament to her hard work, intellectual curiosity, and the strong foundation she has received through St. Louis Public Schools. Lucy's success in the Young Scientists Program is powerful proof that our students continue to pursue the sciences with passion and excel at the highest levels. It demonstrates that, given the opportunity, our students can thrive in challenging academic environments and contribute to the important scientific advancements. Please join me in congratulating Lucy, and will I, can we have Ms. Brown join us? All righty.
Thank you.
Let me just say one thing. If I can just say one thing, that Lucy's teacher was coming, but she couldn't make it. This is her text. Lucy is amazingly curious, funny, and invested in her education. She's motivated, self-driven, and just a good person. She is an amazing friend to her peers, helpful, and also involved in sports. She wins, she's a runner. She's also a part of Health Occupations of America. She's gonna be a doctor, and she's in IB International Baccalaureate. So she's good.
I'll get you, I'll get you.
Okay. Right now, we're going to be celebrating a lifetime of service and mentorship. I'm honored to recognize someone who has had a great deal of impact in St. Louis Public Schools. His impact has been nothing short of extraordinary. Mr. George Love retired on August 1, 2025, after years of, after years of dedicated service as a custodian at Wall Bridge and Vashon High School. But to describe him simply as a custodian would overlook the countless roles that he has played in our lives or in the lives of our students. Mr. Love has been a mentor, a surrogate father to many, an author, the founder and CEO of Prepare: The Gateway to Northwest, a nonprofit dedication to uplift and empowering young people. His generosity has been equally remarkable. Over the years, Mr. Love and his wife, Ms. Stephanie, have personally given $500 scholarships to 100 students who attended St. Louis Public Schools. Which is just a small gesture that speaks to his deep belief that there is potential in all of our students and his unwavering commitment to their success. Mr. Love's dedication is inspiring, and our youth will, he will help our youth reach beyond, beyond their dreams, even aiming him at, I'm sorry, even earning him a guest appearance on The Steve Harvey Show, where he shared a story and passion for service with a national audience. Can we play the video? Mr. Love.
It's not the amount of money that I make on the job, but it's the mission that I'm on while I'm on the job. Yeah. Well, since you started this program, you've made a major impact on some students' lives, man. As a matter of fact, you don't know this, Mr. Love, but two of them came here today. Wow. Jasmine and Chris, come on down.
I would like to thank you because you gave me the opportunity to not only buy my books, but to actually instill courage in me and make me feel like I mattered. You gave me the opportunity to go out and try something that I wasn't going to be able to do without a little bit of help, and I always look back on it, and I'm thinking about it as if I try harder, maybe one day I can give back like how you did.
Ah, give me a hand. God bless you.
Mr. Love, I'd like to thank you. My family would like to thank you. I appreciate the opportunity you gave me. I hope it don't stop her. I hope other students around the world get the same opportunities I did. The scholarship you gave me, I used towards going to college where I'm at now, Lansville University, that I play on their football team, and I'm just grateful.
Mr. Love, on behalf of St. Louis Public Schools, thank you for your service, your leadership, and your countless, and the countless lives that you've touched. You have left a lasting legacy, and we are deeply grateful. Can we have you come up here? And Ms. Love, come on, come on. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. Have another one. On July 30, 2025, Desi notified me regarding our annual determination under IDEA that SLPS has received the highest determination a school can receive, which on a scale from one to four, four being the highest, SLPS received a four. This could not have been done without the leadership of Ms. Candace Boyd. Please come. Ms. Candace Boyd and her team, that is why you are here, Ms. Boyd. Come on. Come on, Ms. Boyd. So we want to just say, as a result of your dedication and commitment to our special education programs, St. Louis Public Schools has received the highest determination as determined by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Congratulations to you and your team. Come on.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We see you. We see you. Your team, okay?
Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Madam President, that concludes the Spirit of Excellence.
Thank you, Dr. Barisha Day. We now move into the superintendent's reports, academics, finance, and operations.
Thank you. Tonight, you will hear from Chief of Schools and our Chief of Technology. They will be sharing information regarding the review of our M66 and our APR data from 2023, 2024. You'll hear the goals related to our district continuous school improvement plan, the MOSIS and Core Data the MOSIS and Core Data Submission Timeline, and the MSBA Program Evaluation as it relates to Z-Space and the 95% Group. I just wanted to note that our M66 and our APR data for 2025, 2024, 2025 will be released in the late fall, which could be any time between late October and November, just based on the things that we know happened last year. During the 2023-2024 school year, the information was released last year in late November. Tonight, as it relates to managerial leadership, you'll also hear about a new program evaluation tool, which will help us provide reports that reflect effectiveness of our programming. Can I have the Chief of Schools and Chief of Technology come up to do your presentation and share?
Okay. Good evening, Board President Collins Adams, Vice President Hubbard, members of the board, our Superintendent Dr. Borishade, and members of the community and listening audience. My name is Natasha Mitchell. I'm the Chief Technology Officer, and I'm honored to be co-presenting this evening with my fellow Cabinet Member, Chief of Schools, Dr. Allison Dino. Together, we'll share a joint presentation representing both the Accountability and Academics Departments. Tonight, we'll look at our 2023-2024 MSEP and APR data connected to our district's Continuous School Improvement Plan, review key MOSIS and Core Data Timelines, and preview upcoming program evaluations for two important district initiatives, 95% Group and Z-Space. The information you'll hear reflects how we use our past performance to shape the future of student success in St. Louis Public Schools. Our Student Success Goals are the anchor for everything we do as a district: third-grade reading, third-grade math, college and career readiness, and culture and climate. These goals are not just aspirations. They are targets that align directly with our APR indicators and our Continuous School Improvement Plan. By analyzing this data on a continuous cycle, we can see where we are making gains, identifying areas of need, and align our instructional supports and resources. Ultimately, this creates a direct through line from data reporting to daily instruction, ensuring every student is on track to meet or exceed our success goals. Our strategic values define how we work toward our goals. These values, from highly effective educators and leaders to authentic family partnerships, to the use of equitable and multiple sources of data, are embedded into the way we interpret and act on APR and MSEP data. Together, these systems allow us not only to measure outcomes, but also to live our values, ensuring students are joyful and engaged, receiving personalized supports, and graduating as competent, culturally aware, and college and career-ready critical thinkers. As we focus on our Portrait of a Graduate this evening, we are proud to spotlight two outstanding students from Clyde C. Miller, Ernie Staples, and Marcella Booker. These exemplary students. These exemplary students live out the qualities of St. Louis Public Schools' Portrait of a Graduate each and every day. They've joined us tonight to share their experience with Z-Space and to invite the board to see the technology in action. You'll have the opportunity to explore this dynamic, innovative tool firsthand and experience how it is transforming student learning. All right, I'll turn it over to these ladies.
Good evening, President Collins Adams, members of the board, and everyone in attendance. My name is Ernie Staples, and this is my friend, Marcella Booker. We are seniors at Clyde Senior Career Academy. We are here to talk about the new Z-Space computers that have been a game changer for us, especially in our chemistry classes. Z-Space isn't your typical computer. It's a special kind of all-in-one laptop that uses augmented virtual reality technology. Sorry. It does use a headset, which is great because it makes a shared experience. Instead, using a special stylus that can pull objects out of the screen, interact with them in 3D space, it's a full immersive hands-on learning environment that really makes you feel like you're a part of the lesson.
Our chemistry class was transformed by these devices. Concepts that were abstracted and difficult to grasp from a test book suddenly became tangible. For example, we used Z-Space to study molecule structures. We could literally manipulate a molecule, rotating it to see every single atom and bond from all angles. We could also break apart compounds and rebuild them, which made a huge difference in understanding how chemical reactions work. Before Z-Space, we struggled to visualize things like the different types of chemical bonds. With Z-Space, we could see and feel them. The program lets us dissect a molecule, isolating specific atoms to see their properties up close. This kind of hands-on experience not only made the subject more engaging, but also helped us retain the information so much better.
The Z-Space devices are a great addition to our school for several reasons. First, they provide a powerful way to learn. They've even, they've, I'm sorry. They've been proven to increase student engagement to improve test scores. The immersive nature of the technology captures your attention and makes you want to explore the topic even more.
Second, oh, my fault. Second, Z-Space prepares us for the future. As a career academy, our goal is to be career and college-ready. This kind of technology is used in professional fields like medicine, engineering, and manufacturing. Having this experience in high school gives us a significant advantage. It's not just about learning a subject. It's about developing the skills and mindset needed for our 21st century workforce.
Looking ahead, we would like to make a request for future consideration. Clyde C. Miller is a career center. And while Z-Space has been incredible for our science classes, we believe its potential for our CTE programs is limitless. If funding were to become available, we would love to see the addition of Z-Space modules specifically for career and technical education. Imagine students in our IT pathways engaging in coursework for in-demand careers in web and game development, or students in our health science pathways practicing for clinical skills, procedures, and preparation for exams to earn industry recognized credentials. This will not only enhance our current programs, but also give us an even greater head start of our chosen pathways.
In conclusion, the Z-Space computers have been an extreme resource. They've made complex subjects like chemistry understandable and fun. They give us a glimpse into the future of education in our careers. We want to thank the Board of Education for this investment. It's truly making a difference in the lives of St. Louis Public School students.
Michaela and Arneese, are you going to show us how it works?
And now they're gonna go up to show how the different, how a different module on the machine works. They're facing both directions, so hopefully people in the audience can see and you all can see as well.
Yes, you have to go over there in order to see this. You won't be able to see the 3D. You've seen it. Yeah, you've seen it. You've seen it. You love it. You want it all over.
Thank you, thank you. There's nothing like learning from students, huh? Pretty amazing work they're doing. Just a quick recap of our agenda for the evening. We'll review our APR data from '23, '24, take a look at our Continuous School Improvement Plan goals for the next few years.
We got a question.
Oh, so sorry.
They have a question?
Okay, my question is, when are we going to expand this to include kindergarten to first grade all the way through 12th? I was there when we first introduced them, and I was so excited. I wanted one. I wanted to take one home. It was that exciting. I really love it. I just love it. And I really want to see us expand it to the earlier grades as well, because it is a fantastic tool.
Thank you. We'll definitely look into that.
What do you think?
What do I think? We have it at some of our middle schools now, our STEM middle school, so maybe our next expansion would be beyond the STEM middle schools first. Yep.
So if someone or a company wanted to volunteer to pay for some, that would really help, right?
Always.
That would always help.
I hope someone is listening, really, because these are really fantastic tools.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Jones, I'm not above asking people. I'd just go straight to them and say, can you support us?
Sorry, thank you. We'll take, then we'll take a look at our Core Data Submissions Timeline. Those are, that's all the data that we're required to submit to the state every year. And then, as Dr. Borishade explained, talk about our new program evaluation tool and two programs that we'll be reviewing using that tool this upcoming year. The 2023-2024 APR was received by SLPS in November of last year, and we provided a more real in-depth information about what the APR, the Annual Performance Report, meant to our school at that time. This is a broad overview, sharing how this is connected into our new school improvement plans. As you can see on this implementation timeline, Missouri is moving from like an MSEP 1 to an MSEP 2 in terms of how points are awarded for the APR. And so this timeline shows you as different, as we're moving into the different areas and at what point you'll notice that reclassification, meaning accreditation, can occur for school districts across the state. Within this, there's also sub-timelines where school districts will be submitting their school improvement plans and documentation around those school improvement plans in different cycles. Some school districts are assigned to Cycle 1, which begins this school year. St. Louis Public Schools has been assigned to Cycle 2, which means we'll be submitting our documentation to the state beginning in the summer of 2026. This slide here is an overview of how points are awarded for the annual performance reports. There are 200 points possible total in two separate categories. One category is related to performance or academic achievement and growth, and another category is in continuous improvement. You'll note that 70% of the points awarded in the annual performance report are related to academic achievement, and 30% of those points are awarded for continuous improvement. This slide shows the overall district performance from the 2023-2024 APR. Please note, some of the points awarded have carried forward from year to year or previous years, such as graduation rate in the performance section and the Continuous Improvement Plan in the Continuous Improvement Section. So you don't submit those every year. As, once you get some points, then they will carry forward for several years. Our next set of these points will come forward to us with the '26-27 school year, because we're in Cycle 2 of that for Continuous Improvement. The area of success-ready measures, which you can see is in the Continuous Improvement Section, includes points for the administration of the Kindergarten Entry Assessment, the 8th Grade ICAP, or the Individual Career Academic Plan, and attendance. In the '23-24 school year, SLPS was awarded points for ICAP completion. We were not awarded points for attendance or kindergarten entry assessments. Please note that during 2024-2025, we assured that students were taking the kindergarten entry assessment. We anticipate earning points for this upcoming APR in that area as well.
Question. Can you talk a little bit more about attendance? I get the KE. Like, that makes sense, and we are moving forward to kind of address that.
So you receive points for attendance if you meet a threshold of at least 80% attendance, and our attendance rate was around 50%, and so that's not enough to earn any points in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Do you want to note here? Oh, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you. With the kindergarten entry exam, could you just say a little bit more about how we're planning to get on the assessment track for that?
Oh, sure. So we actually got on the assessment track for that last fall, which was great. Previously, in the state of Missouri, previous to last year, it was, you would mark that you were providing an entry assessment. Starting last year, you had to, or for the '23-24 school year, I should say, you had to actually upload that those assessments had been taken by individual student. That was not a step that at that point in time occurred. Last year, we did a big push to ensure that all of our teachers had training on the KOF, which is the tool we use for the kindergarten entry assessment. And we worked to ensure that students were taking that and that it was appropriately coded within our system so that the points could be captured when we moved forward. I'm also pleased to report that Monday of this week, our kindergarten teachers again got their annual training on the KOF. So we anticipate that this year, the assessment will also be given. This particular assessment has to be given within the first six weeks of the school year. There's lots of parameters around it. So that is how, once we notified that, there, once we understood that there was an area to remediate, we remediated it last year, and we continue to attend to that for this year.
Yeah. I was gonna just share that same thing, too. Just note that in previous years, people were left on their own to take that to professional development. But now, the professional development is part of our rollout.
For back-to-school, yeah.
Great.
We worked in general with our back-to-school professional development role this year to ensure that some of those required training components were included early on and part of the August, like the required dyslexia training, et cetera.
Great. Yeah, just for some context, we were talking about this on Saturday at a MSBA board training. And so, we were wondering for ourselves, and I was sitting next to somebody from Pembroke County, which came up earlier, about the same problem they were having. So I was just trying to get a little more information on our end, so thank you.
Absolutely. The last thing I want to note here on this slide is that overall, in '23-24, SLPS earned 10 more points in APR than they did for '22-23, which raised our percentage up to 65.7%. As you know, our mark is 70%, and we are getting closer there every single year. So to that end, in order to ensure we're reaching our goals, first, we have to set them and make sure we have appropriate targets. And we earn our points towards APR with our district's Continuous School Improvement Plan. Our previous plan has sunsetted for Transformation Plan 4.0, and we will, like I showed previously, be required to submit a new plan to DESI starting in 2026, but that doesn't mean we wait until then to set targets and work on them. This means, right now, it's the perfect time. We have a strong focus on ensuring that our students can demonstrate all of our Portrait of a Graduate competencies. We just saw a great example of that earlier this evening, and you note that we talk about the Portrait of a Graduate every time we come forward because that is what we want to ensure that every student has access to, so they can reach their dreams. So how do we do that? That means we focus our school improvement plan on our Portrait of a Graduate competencies. We ensure that all of our goals are student outcome-focused goals, not focused on other areas. We'll go through the goals in just a few moments, and I want to also share that our new iteration of our school improvement plans, the school plan and the district plan are very much in alignment with each other. For every district goal, there is also a school-based goal in the same area, so they're all nested together. This cohesion will help us ensure alignment, which will help us work to improve student outcomes for students across the board.
And Dr. Dino, just to note for the audience, that is a change from previous years. And Dr. Dino, just to note for the audience, that is a change from previous years.
Yes.
The goals usually were not aligned from school goals and district goals.
That's correct. There was not an expectation that our school improvement plans, which we call accountability plans, were nested within the district goals.
And the other thing to note, remember Foster, is that we heard from DESI in that our plan is actually student-focused. Yeah.
So this is our first set of C-SIP goals. And you'll note that there are three of them nested together here in the competencies of college and career-ready, competent, and critical thinker. We have grouped these three goals together because they are really focused on student academic achievement. Goal one is about increasing the number of our schools who reach that 70% threshold on the APR. Goal two is about continuing to focus on two and a half years of growth in our STAR reading and math benchmark assessments because we know we can't move to more proficiency if we're not focused on really steep growth trajectories for all students. And goal three is around critical thinking because we do want to increase the numbers of students scoring proficient or advanced on the MAP and EOC assessments. I do want to note here for District Goal 3 that once all of the MAP scores are finalized, after all of the various like data cleanup that's happening now finishes, there will be a table that for each grade level and each individual test, we will be able to showcase what 15% means at third grade math, what 15% means at the algebra test, all the way along. Right now, we're saying that we have a 15% target in all areas. We'll be able to show exactly what that means at that time. These next set of goals are grouped together because they support climate and culture. We know that students who are good communicators and good collaborators can be good members, are members of their school community that can help them have a good sense of climate and culture in their schools. Please note that all of our goals in this area are using our new climate and culture survey. We have moved from using the Panorama survey before to now using the DESI Climate and Culture Survey. You'll see that there's two different goals for elementary and secondary. That second, that goal for the secondary is a specific target that DESI requires that we ask of all of our secondary students. And that particular question doesn't exist on the elementary survey, and so we need to have a different goal for the elementary survey. But they're all focused on what students say about themselves. They, I can solve problems among my friends in a positive way. That supports so many things. In terms of collaborating, maybe we don't agree on how we're going to solve this particular science problem or this math riddle. Maybe we don't agree on whose turn it is to play what on the playground or who's going to sit where. However, we need to, we all need to learn how to solve problems. And so this will help us focus on that and we're working really strongly with our climate and culture group on there. And then, as we think about collaborator, I can help make the school a better place. It's part and parcel of all of us each day to make things better for students. And we know that students make their, make our schools better just by coming. And our last set of goals, support students on becoming change agents in their communities and increasing cultural awareness. This past spring, you got to hear a presentation about our world language and our seals of biliteracy and our interest in creating more pathways for students to become biliterate across the system. Our review team will get started this fall and come, looking forward to coming forward to you with some recommendations so that we can increase opportunities and access for students all across the city. It's important that the things that matter to us are the things that we put into our C-SIP. And again, I just want to point out, everything here is about a student-focused outcome goal so that we know we are measuring, are we providing better opportunities for our students so that they can meet the mark? And I will, questions? Go ahead.
It's more a comment than a question, but I guess it's a question as well. However, we can, or, you know, if we can work with you to support the efforts that are going on with this, we would love to do as much as possible on that. I hope I speak for the board on that. We learned a lot about this on Saturday. And it seems like, things like the growth model are still like particularly confusing to all educators across the state, including the ones that are like heavily into the data. So if there's like professional development opportunities or things like that, that the folks that you supervise need, let us know and we can try to make something happen there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and I will turn it over to Chief Mitchell.
Okay, the next session we're going to talk about our MOSIS and Core Data. So in addition to academic performance measures, our district submits required data to DESI through MOSIS and Core Data six times a year. These submissions include both aggregate and individual-level student and staff data. This timeline shows the cadence of our six required submissions each year from July to June. Accurate, timely data entry is essential to state reporting, funding, and accountability. Core data submissions involve entering or verifying aggregate counts through the state's Core Data application. Some fields are populated manually while others pull from MOSIS uploads. MOSIS uploads contain individual-level records, files are uploaded, errors are reconciled, and the data certified before each submission deadline. Our most recent June Core Data cycle closed on June 30th, 2025. This required uploading, uploading nine student-level files and completing two Core Data screens. These submissions are critical for compliance and accurate state reporting. The next section is about program evaluation. This year, we're reviewing selected district initiatives to measure their impact on student learning in alignment with our district goals. So the key district initiatives that we're going to do program evaluations for this year, led by our dynamic research and evaluation team, led by Dr. Molly Beck, is Z-Space, which you all just got to experience firsthand, and 95% Group. These were selected because they are significant investments that directly support our strategic priorities in C-SIP goals in literacy, science, and college and career readiness. All of our program evaluations are conducted using the Missouri School Board Association's Program Evaluation Framework, which you see on the screen here. This gives us consistent evidence-based, a consistent evidence-based process for measuring effectiveness across our programs. We use both quantitative and qualitative data, and we evaluate not just outcomes, but also how well each program is being implemented. The purpose of the program evaluation framed here is, when we conduct these program evaluations, we start by looking at effectiveness. Are these instructional programs and initiatives improving student academic outcomes? We then utilize both quantitative and qualitative data, combining student performance results with classroom observations and feedback to get a full picture of progress, instructional practices, and then the fidelity of implementation. This information helps us support data-informed decision-making, determining whether to refine, continue, or expand a program like Z-Space as we ensure alignment with our district's strategic priorities, C-SIP goals, and our portrait of a graduate. This approach keeps us focused on results, accountability, and continuous improvement. Our first program evaluation is for the 95% Group, which is in its first year of a full district-wide implementation. This Phonics instruction program is designed to strengthen early literacy skills, particularly in grades K to 5, and extend to middle school and ELA and social studies in targeted ways. The desired outcome is measurable improvement in reading as shown through STAR, Renaissance, Early Literacy, and our STAR reading assessments.
Dr. Mitchell, I have a question. Sorry. Going back to Slide 22, like the actual program evaluation tool, which was recommended by MSBA, I think is really great. Are we saying that we are also wanting to implement this for our pilot programs as well? Or just when a, an initiative or curriculum or tool has been procured?
I will defer to our superintendent, Dr.
We're going to do it on our pilot program as well.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we're, we're excited to, the formal evaluations using the tool this year. All right, so we're also doing a program evaluation on Z-Space. Z-Space is in its second year. This is a 3D interactive learning tool that supplements our science instruction. So you got to see our portrait of a graduate students, kind of demonstrating what the tool looks like in the classroom and how it impacts their learning. The goal of Z-Space is to improve student academic outcomes through more engaging, hands-on learning experiences. And we also want to gauge teacher perceptions of its value as part of their science curriculum. And then, participants in this program evaluation include all of our high school science classes, also Gateway Middle School and Carnahan Steam. And then for middle school, as you know, we implemented a new science curriculum amplify. So we'll be able to use Amplify Benchmark pre and post-assessments with a comparison group. And then for high school, we're using pre and post-assessments aligned to the curriculum. Surveys and focus groups will give us teacher feedback to complement that student achievement data. And then, as we move forward, these program evaluations will guide how we allocate resources, refine instructional strategies, and sustain initiatives that deliver the greatest impact for our students. By grounding our decisions in evidence and aligning every program with our district goals and portrait of a graduate, we ensure that our work is intentional, accountable, and focused on continuous improvement. This commitment to evaluation isn't just a compliance step. It's a way to keep every student's success at the center of every decision that we make as a district.
I have a question. What, and it may be for you or Dr. Borishadeh, what do you do to monitor that schools are implementing all of these wonderful resources with fidelity?
Yeah, actually, if you, let me go back to...
We do school visits and we talk to students.
They'll tell you the truth.
And students will tell us. The students will give you the best data. But, and if you look at the metrics, so we are doing implementation surveys and focus groups with Z-Space. And then on 95% Group, there's some specific implementation observation forms aligned both to those programs so that we can, we can measure the fidelity of the implementations.
Thank you.
But the classroom visits gives us a lot of information.
Thank, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty.
I do have a couple of questions, but I think they might be for Dr. Dino specifically. Or Dr., Superintendent Borishadeh. We talked about the improvement for our KE plans to make sure that, you know, our principals and our students are getting their information uploaded correctly. Do we have anything concretely to address like our attendance score, our attendance plan, and then our CCR assessments?
Great questions. In terms of our attendance, that has been something that we have been working to improve for quite some time. And the tornado didn't help us because the last week of school, you know, lots of things changed. And so, the request to DESI was, can we get a waiver as a result of the last, as, yeah, as a result of that? I do know that one of the things that they are changing now is a, they're going, they're moving towards enrollment versus attendance. And so, I can share more about that strategic change at the, at the next board meeting.
Second part was the CCR assessments.
So part of the work that we began with our high schools, again, last year, was we were recognizing some of these things as making sure that all of our high school principals are aware of the breadth of options of assessments that students can take. And not every student has to take the same assessment. And so, we're, first of all, was ensuring that everyone had the same understanding. Second was ensuring that people had access to take different assessments. And we do anticipate seeing some growth in those areas as a result of that.
Awesome, thank you.
Our finance? President Collins?
But just give me one second to give a statement. The audit report that was presented by State Auditor Scott Fitzpatrick covered the period of June 6, 2023, through August 2024. And I believe it's through August 4th, 2024, just as the Armanino report and the internal audits did. And those were released a few months ago. An entire year has passed since that timeframe. Continued corrective action will be determined and discussed in our board sessions. We will monitor our district's growth. We will monitor as we govern. Your attention to what we're doing is deeply appreciated. But I do ask one thing. Let's remain focused on the education of our students and let the noise in the room always be about them. Dr. Borishadeh.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, Missouri State Auditor Scott Fitzpatrick had a press conference to release and discuss the first of two audits reports for St. Louis Public Schools. We welcome this opportunity for transparency and public accountability concerning our practices in human resources, finances, and procurement. While St. Louis Public School has already implemented tighter internal controls with financial oversight and budgeting, including a formal review and approval process for contracts, credit card usage, and administrative hiring, we know there is still significant work ahead. And as Scott Fitzpatrick noted, the situation is fixable. We are taking concrete steps to address the audit's findings. We now require all disbursements to have supporting documents, and we've held training sessions for all departments on financial accountability, procurement procedures, and state compliance. We have also completed and will revisit policy revisions for our finance department. The HR department is also taking action. A task force is currently reviewing HR policies. And once their review is complete, the policies will be sent to the Missouri School Board Association, also known as MSBA, for additional review. From there, they will be reviewed by the governance committee and then presented to the board for final approval. Our board president has reconvened the governance committee where we shared which bylaws were edited and sent to MSBA. These bylaws, which govern the board itself, has also been reviewed, will also be reviewed by MSBA. Furthermore, our newest board members have completed their training.
Great job, great job, great job. Grueling.
Following the release of the Ruben Brown audit, the finance department developed a corrective action plan and meets weekly to address the items. In response to the state audit, both the finance and HR departments are, have submitted their own corrective action plans and will be presented during the upcoming board work session. To further support these efforts, we have requested assistance from the Deputy Commissioner of Finance and Administrative Services from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The board president and I have also met with the Regional Business Council to request their support. I've also spoken with the Chief Recovery and Neighborhood Transformational Officer from the mayor's office to ensure that SOPS is included in conversations about the redevelopment of St. Louis Public Schools, and they've responded. We now, we know St. Louis Public School has been under scrutiny for years. But as we see, but we see this as a turning point, one that strengthens our resolve to build a more transparent, efficient, and student-centered system. Even with these challenges, as you see, our M66 points for the 23-24 school year were at the highest, increasing our points by 10 points to 135.5 out of 200, which brought our annual progress report to, our annual performance report to 65.7. This year, or I should say, the 24-25 school year, we set goals that our students would go 2.5 years, and more than 5,000 of our students reached that goal. As a result of our focus on students, our graduation rates went up. They went from 69.65 in 2023 to 72.85 in 2023-2024. We celebrated 40 of our administrators last year for the growth made in their respective schools. We are dedicated. We are dedicated. We are committed to moving forward with integrity, accountability, and a renewed sense of purpose. We look forward to our continuing support and partnership with the state auditor's office and the greater St. Louis community. Tonight, you will hear from Chief, our Chief Financial Officer, who will be sharing information related to the audit completed by Ruben Brown and the timeline to ensure that the audit is submitted prior to the December 31st deadline, which also leads to additional points and gets us back on track and on time with our audit submissions. Each member has received a copy of the single audit report on June 25th, and you have another one in front of you, just in case you didn't bring that. There will be three types of deficiencies that will be discussed along with the corrective actions being taken. I will turn it over to our Chief- I will turn it over to our chief financial officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, President Dr. Colin Allen Adams, Vice President Emily Hubbard, other members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Borishadeh, and other stakeholders in the audience and those who are watching on at home. My name is Kimberly Johnson, and I am the Chief Financial Officer for St. Louis Public Schools. Tonight, I will be presenting to you an overview of the corrective action plan that was developed in response to the FY '24 Single Audit Report for the year ended June 30, 2024, and that was submitted by our auditors, Ruben Brown. Our agenda tonight is to cover the SLPS strategic values and the portrait of a graduate, and how this corrective action plan aligns with those values. I also will be presenting and discussing the following key areas for this corrective action plan for the single audit, which includes the following. The accounting standards used by Ruben Brown, the structure of the findings, review of the summary of the audit findings, the type of deficiencies that were identified, and then review future steps that the district would be taking as well as important deadlines. I'm going to present this corrective action point, not in what you consider audit speak, but I'm going to break it down hopefully in layman's term so everyone who is hearing this corrective action plan could understand it in a way that I think is easier to understand than how auditors talk. As you can see, our strategic values for this report, it is going to support two of the major areas. It is supporting, this, this report was focused on two of the key strategic values. One, equitable and multiple sources of data, and two, authentic family and community partnerships. When we talk about portrait of a graduate, St. Louis Financial Department supports all of the seven key competencies that help to build these strategic goals that are the framework for the portrait of a graduate. We touch every single department in this organization, and we help with helping them to make sure that these key competencies are enhanced, in place, and resource allocated. So let's talk about some terms. You may hear general accepted auditing standards, GAAS. So let's talk about what is that? So general accepted auditing standards is a set of guidelines that auditors follow to do their job properly. When they're reviewing the organization finances, there are standards that they have to adhere to to make sure that the audit is, number one, objective, meaning it's unbiased and it's fair. Two, that it's reliable, based on facts, not assumptions. And three, that it's high quality, it's done professionally and thoroughly. Now, why does this matter to you? If you're a parent, a community member, a part of a local organization, you want to trust that the public money that we are enhanced with here at the school is being looked at and being audited based on standards. We, you want to have that assurance that the financial information is accurate, any risks that is associated with the finance are properly reported, and the organization is being held accountable. In short, you're looking, and GAAS helps protect the public's trust by ensuring that audits are done the right way. Let's talk about the audit opinion on the single and financial statement. Now, if you recall, there were two reports that was done by the auditors, Ruben and Brown. I want to talk here just about the FY '24 financial statements because that statement, that report, is not what we're going to be discussing as a corrective action plan here. Why do you want to say that? Well, first, what does, when you hear an auditor's opinion, what does that really mean? It means that an independent auditor reviewed our financial records and found no major problems or errors. Let me repeat that because this is our financial statement. When an independent auditor came in, Ruben and Brown, they looked at all of our financial records, and they found no major problems or errors. This means that the finances are accurate and trustworthy and can be confidently used by parents, board members, community organization, and funders to understand how money is being managed. This includes the district overall financial position. They look at every major fund, like education, curriculum, transportation. They looked at grants. They looked at how changes in funds were used and where relevant cash was handled. In plain terms, the auditor gave us an unmodified opinion, which equate, equates to a clean audit. It, the Ruben and Brown confirmed that our finances were well documented and fairly reported for the year reviewed. In simple, plain terms, the auditor gave SLPS a clean bill of financial health. Now, let's talk about the single audit. Before we get into the single audit, I just want to kind of bring your attention to words that are used and how those words are color-coded. Starting on page one of your single audit book by Ruben and Brown, I'm going to read a statement that they presented. It says, "The auditors considered the district internal controls over financial reporting as a basis for designing audit procedures that are appropriate for the purpose of expressing their opinion on the financial statements, however, not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the district internal controls." Now, when you hear that statement, what does that really mean? That the auditors then, they looked at the financials, our checks and balances, to help them plan and decide on what to test. Their job was not to give an official opinion on whether the district internal controls are strong or weak. They only use that information to help guide the review of the financial statements. So when you hear the term deficiency, what does deficiency mean in audit terms? It is a, deficiency is when a process, a rule, or a system meant to protect the organization money or ensure accurate financial reporting isn't working as well as assured. This could be because it's poorly designed, not being followed correctly, or missing supporting documentation or the information altogether. Now, why does it matter? If there are weak spots that aren't addressed, they might allow for errors, waste, or even fraud to go unnoticed. Think of it as leaving a window open or unlocked. Nothing bad may happen yet, but there is still a risk that it could. So let's talk about a control deficiency. When we're looking at the green, yellow, and red, auditors often use the traffic light model to report deficiencies because it's simple, it's clear way to communicate the severity or urgency of the issues to a broader audience, including people who may not be experts in finance or auditing. Now, when we talk about green, which is a control deficiency, that means that it's an internal control that exists where the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent, detect, or correct the statements in a timely manner. Now, for these purposes, green means there's a small gap in our processes that could let minor errors slip through before they're fixed. They usually don't create big problems, but we still want to keep an eye on those. It's like green, you're good to go. It should, how do we take it serious? Well, it's a low concern, but it's still worth fixing. So even if it's a green light, if there's errors or small gaps, we're looking at that to complete. Let's talk about yellow. Yellow represents a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal controls that is less severe than a material weakness, but yet is important enough to merit attention and have changes with governments. So that means that, as you can tell, a yellow light, right? You're stopping before it turns red. It hasn't allowed you to go green yet, and you're there. You're looking at items that could either go either way, right? They could either go green, which means it's good, or they can go red, which means it's going bad. But at a yellow light, you stop, you look, you evaluate, and that's what this means here. Now, when we talk about a material weakness of red, well, you know what a red light means. It means that you have a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control such that there is a reasonable possibility that material misstatements of the entity finances will not be prevented to detect or deter in terms, on a timely basis. So red is the strongest. It is serious enough in our internal controls that we want to make sure we develop a corrective action plan immediately. It involves multiple stakeholders, and it also covers areas such as training, oversight, or looking at our systems and how those systems or processes can be redefined. Now, why does it matter? Well, when you see a red or material weakness deficiency, it can reduce public trust and how the district handles money. It increases the risk of significant mistakes or misuse of funding going undetected. And it could also cause compliance issues with state and federal funding. Now, what do we do? As stated, when we see a material weakness red, it requires our immediate attention and correction. We're fixing those to make sure that any issues that are seen in our financial records, processes are, are corrected and that there is transparency on how we're correcting those. And I've just gone through those slides, green, yellow, and red. So now, let's talk about the structure of the findings. The structure of findings, and these come directly from Ruben and Brown, it has six categories or six titles that I want to kind of go through with you. When we talk about criteria, it is the specific rules or standards we are supposed to follow to keep finances trustworthy and legal. Those are your rules, regulations, laws, and standards. When you talk about the condition, it is what the auditors found that doesn't match those rules, the actual problems that were discovered. You talk about cause. That's the root reason why the problem happened, such as either weak controls, missing training, system error, user error. Then they look at what is the effect or potential effect, the real or possible harm this problem could cause, like mistakes in money reports or wasted funds. Identification, if it's a repeat finding, whether this is an ongoing issue that wasn't fixed from previous audits. And then you want to know what the recommendation, what the auditor strongly advised on how to fix the problem and stop it from happening again. And finally, who's responsible to make sure that the corrective actions are put in place, are properly implemented, and properly executed, and continuously reviewed to stop them from becoming, you know, second, third findings?
Ms. Johnson, in the effort to stay engaged in all of this with the, what were the three major things that the auditors found? And then I noticed, getting ahead of you a little bit, we have the future steps and implications for that. If we could tell us what our major things were, and then what your steps are to be able to correct those things?
Okay. So the summary of the audit findings. The auditors considered the following deficiencies to be material weaknesses and questioned costs. We will go through those three. They are labeled 24-001, 24-002, and 24-003. The auditors also identified significant deficiencies and questioned those costs, which is 2024-004 and 2024-005. I'll give a quick summary and then talk about the corrective actions. So 2021 is considered a material weakness and a control finding. And I'm just going to break it down a little bit on what does that really talk about? It talks about our organization's structure. It means how an organization is set up to support its mission goals, how people communicate and work together, and making sure that we are addressing policies, procedures, making sure there are strong structures in place, and making sure that those structures are clearly defined, communicated, developed, written, and enforcing those policies and procedures, and making sure that we're strengthening our leadership to catch and fix those issues early. Corrective actions. Well, we had to tell what happened, why did we get this? We said what happened was that we had several retirements and some hiring challenges that caused the loss of important accounting knowledge. This led to delays in audit responses and error in some of our financial processes. There also was poor communication between departments that provided information. So how are we going to fix it? We're going to hire and train staff quickly to keep the knowledge within the team. We're developing accounting policies and procedures. And we're processing and making sure everyone is trained on those policies and procedures. We're working with other departments to break down those silos of communication so we can make sure that we are getting the information we need for our audit in a timely manner and that it is exactly what the auditors need. We're performing monthly reconciliation and reviews of all of our financial processes to make sure we catch errors or issues early along so we can make those corrections.
I would say that Ms. Johnson's team is doing a great job in this area. This is a repeat finding, and they've already structured themselves so that they can address this. And then I would say that in the next finding, this is a repeat finding from 2022. And again, Ms. Johnson's team is doing... And again, Ms. Johnson's team is doing a great job in terms of developing their corrective actions around that. I would say that the next finding, which is a repeat finding from 2022, 2023, is also things that Ms. Johnson and the team are working on. Can you then, I know that we're going to talk about this in more detail in our work session. Can you then take us to, take us right up to the work session in terms of our future steps?
Okay. Our future steps. There was a corrective action plan that was developed that addressed these five control findings that came from the audit. We have developed an intensive corrective action plan that only summarizes at a high level, but also breaks down what we're doing on a monthly basis. How are we addressing as a financial team? For instance, one of the findings was monthly reconciliations and making sure that we're posting those monthly budget and financial report, that we're monitoring any changes. And any changes that we're seeing that we have to adjust our budget will come to the board for review. Those are some of the daily tasks and operational corrective actions we're putting in place. When we had a corrective action for leases, we're making sure that we're working with the respective department's operation. When we're looking at subscriptions of IT, we're working with the IT department to make sure that all of that information is in one place, that we are sharing information, the information that we're using for audits is consistent, and that it is cross-the-board, so we're speaking with one voice. When we start to look at some of the other areas, and I'm just giving you a quick overview, each area, each finding has a metrics that is looking at what we're doing, what those goals are, what those strategies are, who's responsible for that? Who's responsible for those goals internal to the financial department? And who are responsible for those goals, those corrective actions outside the financial department? As I stated, we depend on operation, IT, academics, other departments to make sure that we have the timely information, the data that will help us make sure we're meeting our deadlines for the audit. So we have, we meet on a weekly basis. We not only go over these corrective action plans for this audit, but we also review the corrective actions that we put in place for the state audit, and we also look at corrective actions that we're putting in place for any of our internal assessment and audits. So we are dedicated to addressing these corrective actions that were built to correct these findings. We have deadlines that we have to make. And for instance, for our current audit that we're in, we have our drop-down pencils down. I think I've kind of talked about that. September 10th, we have been successful where we have turned in the intern field work. Ruben and Brown has came on board to do their onsite review of our documents. They're now giving us lists so they can performance test those, that information. And then by September 22nd, our hands, pencils are going to be down, which means all of the information requested, all of the performance testing done by the auditors. They will have all that information, and the only thing financial will be waiting on if any additional questions. They may have an additional request for information. And as Dr. Borashade say, I will go with you and inform you in more detail about that corrective action plan, looking more at that metrics, which talks about what we're doing now, how are we addressing those corrective actions, what are our daily and monthly reconciliations are looking at, and how are we in terms of our internal deadlines for that corrective action plan? Any questions?
Thank you.
One member, Conover.
Thank you. I was just wondering, in relation to the cap from Ruben Brown, how closely do, does that report, those recommendations align with the Armanino reports' recommendations as well as, I have to be kind of careful with my words here. We'll just say the recommendations of the state auditor's report.
So let me just make a clarification. This corrective action plan was developed by St. Louis Public Schools. This is all response to the Ruben and Brown audit. Now, they gave us their corrective actions in terms of their findings, right? They gave us recommendations. We then, as an organization, looked at those findings, looked at all of the documentation we were missing or not missing, and then we built our own corrective action plan on how we're going to address those findings. We have shared this with Ruben and Brown. They have looked at it and given us a thumbs up. But we are working on this as a daily part of our audit review because our goal is, is to correct those corrective actions, those findings, and definitely not have any repeat findings. So we're doing this in connection as we're actively preparing and in the progress in the midst of our current FY '25 audit. So we're doing this simultaneously.
Thank you for that clarification. Let me just ask the question, I guess, in the more appropriate way. With the SLPS cap, is this only taking into account the recommendations when we developed that, right? And now that we're working on it? Does that just take into account the audit, the single auditor's report? Or does it take into account the other pieces as well?
It takes into account that's what was identified in the single audit. But we also know there are items under the financial statement. Even though we got a clean financial statement, we want to make sure we're continually to approve and making sure the data that we're giving to them is on time and is in the form, in the accuracy, in the form that we need to present to them. That's why we have that deadline of September 10th. That's an internal deadline to make sure we do proper review of all of the documentation that we're now going to be submitting to Ruben and Brown for their deadline of September 22nd. We want to make sure that we have no delays outside of any of their additional questions they may have of the information we're submitting.
And then I want to just add to that. Those corrective action plans also have other impacts. They have cascading impacts. So it also identifies other things that need to be corrected as a result.
Right, that would be outside the scope of the single, right? Absolutely, yeah. So we're working on those things as well. I just want to make sure we're communicating that.
Yes.
So I understand that those corrective action plans then become a part of those items that we need to include in our procurement, our overall plan that we're going to have for?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because there's a master plan that we're developing and that we're constantly looking at to be able to, to improve the entire set of processes in the financial department in SLPS. And the other thing was?
Thank you for that. That's where I was trying to get us to.
There is an umbrella for that. So that would be the umbrella for it. All right, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say one more thing to answer to that. We are developing a corrective action plan very similar to this for the state audit. And it addresses three key areas that we know. Our procurement, budgeted planning, long-term strategic plans, and also it talked about payroll in essence. So what you see here is going to be very similar to what we are doing for the state audit in response. We're developing a corrective action plan. It may have some overlap that you will see, but mainly it will address those findings.
And that's aligned with our policy.
Yes.
Yes.
Everything we're doing in terms of now, in terms of all of our corrective action plans, our procedure development, even looking at our processes, we relate it back to the policy. Because what we want to make sure is that our processes, our operational processes are in line and adhere to our new policies and so are our procedures. So it's a traceability.
And it doesn't just live in policy, but it's implemented, and it helps our day-to-day and how we operate as an organization.
Yeah, no, thank you both for that. I mean, I understand I was extending the scope of what we were discussing here, but I wanted to make sure we were all aligned and clearly communicating about the larger scope of things. Now, there's, of course, some inconsistencies between all three, so we'll have to make sure we do the best we can with that.
Which is what we're looking at in governance and equity and transparency. Well, we'll have to change that word, equity. But, last word. But we're looking, and I'll give the dates of past meetings and the future ones so that it'll just be a matter of record at this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Eddie?
Nope. Madam President, I would like to ask for a point of privilege and move our resolution up because we have the family and the principal here from Dr. Alice Roach.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move item 15.8, our resolution for Dr. Alice Roach, to our next point of discussion in the agenda.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm going to read the resolution. Can I have the family of Dr. Alice Roach? And that includes the principal as well. Come on up. Come on, Ms. Kimberly. Come on. Whereas, Dr. Alice Roach, whereas, Dr. Alice Roach served St. Louis Public School District with unwavering dedication for over 50 years, first as a teacher, principal, and later as the administrative director for the Parsons Blue Foundation, impacting the lives of countless teachers and ultimately their students. Whereas, her exemplary leadership in St. Louis Public Schools fostered an environment of academic excellence, nurturing and supporting the contribution to the success of both the students and educators. Whereas, Dr. Alice Roach, as a passionate advocate for education, tirelessly working to enhance opportunities for students and staff, resources and programs that benefited students and staff of the St. Louis Public Schools and the community at large. Whereas, as the administrative director of the Parsons Blue Foundation, she successfully developed partnerships that expanded support to ensure staff received the financial support to further their education, ultimately preparing them to lead the students of St. Louis Public Schools to dream more, do more, and become more. Whereas, her passing has created a profound void in the hearts of those who have the honor of working alongside her and those who were touched by her caring spirit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that St. Louis Public School Board of Education extends its deepest condolences to the family of Dr. Alice Roach and honors her remarkable life and contributions to the district. Be it further resolved that this resolution be a lasting tribute to her memory, recognizing her years of service and the significant impact she has made on students, staff, and the community, and that her legacy of kindness and dedication be celebrated for generations to come, adopted this August 12, 2025, by the Board of Education of St. Louis Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Dr. Borashade, do we need to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution in honor of Dr. Alice Roach.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. Thinking about school readiness. Tonight, our chief of operations will be sharing information related to all schools, including our co-located schools, transportation, and our chief of technology will join him in providing an update on focus. It's important to me that we share that our custodians have done an outstanding job at getting our schools ready. When you, yes. When you think about the word custodian, our custodians are the gatekeepers of our schools, and they work extremely hard to ensure that our buildings are ready for learning. Our chief of operations has shared that as a result of our co-located schools, how many custodians were made available? How many custodians?
Actually, the number is 25.
25 custodians were made available as a result of our co-located schools. And they got the work done.
It helped to expedite our summer readiness and summer cleaning within two weeks.
Within, because usually, we'll walk in the building at what time? On Sunday?
After midnight.
After midnight, the day before school. Mr. Watson, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Borashade. And good evening to the board. President, Dr. Collins Adams, Vice President Hubbard, to the board, Superintendent Dr. Borashade. Tonight, we're going to give an update around transportation. And before we go into the presentation, I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mr. Love, the custodian, also colleague who's worked tirelessly. So I did want to shout out. And as well as the operations team, the transportation team, who's worked very, very hard this summer to make sure that August 18th, we're ready to support schools, learning, education.
We have our Zoom partners here with us.
And I would also like to recognize our partners with Zoom. We have Mr. Richard Lindell, our regional manager, as well as Ms. Liz Sanchez, executive vice president of Zoom.
Thank you. Welcome.
So tonight's presentation, and again, we focus around the goal areas. And nothing happens without getting our scholars to schools in order for them to accomplish reading, math, be ready for college and career readiness, and also an environment for well-being, culture, and climate. Our strategic values. One highlight is our authentic family and community partnerships. We do have an authentic partner with Zoom. As you'll hear more through the presentation, what authentic means in terms of a partnership. And our portrait of a graduate. These are the pillars to ensure that our graduates are ready beyond high school and ready for the world, in a very diverse world. So tonight's agenda, we will center our conversation and discussion around our timelines and our continuation plan, our school readiness or summer readiness, and then we'll talk next steps. So our transportation department, in conjunction with our partners in Zoom, again, they have worked tirelessly over the summer. They've been being trained. They've been conducting training. They've been creating routes, testing routes. routes, testing routes, working with the Communications Department and providing effective communications. All of this is setting the stage for new horizons as we get ourselves ready for August eighteenth. This summer, we've sent out letters in July, we've sent out letters in August. There'll be more information coming out this Friday, August fifteenth. And we're encouraging families to not only check your emails and make sure that your information within our new student information system focus is updated, but also download the app. The app will provide you with the latest notifications in terms of pickup and drop-off times. I'm proud to announce that all buses to support the two hundred and twenty routes are in St. Louis. I might add that all new air-conditioned bus, new air-conditioning bus have arrived here in St. Louis. So we're a committee that does deserve a hand clap. We'll continue to onboard our internal transportation staff. Zoom has hired all of their team members, their managers, inclusive of their drivers, monitors, even their field supervisors. With our partners with Zoom, again, we have enough drivers to cover the two hundred and twenty routes, which means that a hundred percent of our routes will be covered on day one. Zoom will also, this speaks to the authentic partnership, Zoom will also bring additional drivers to ensure success for opening day and beyond for the district. When it comes to technology and communications, again, as has been stated and I'll reiterate, that we're encouraging families to download the parent app. Parents should have received a text message with the link to download the app. We'll also have a short video on how to download the app and what are some of the next steps with that. In addition to that, we're excited with the new RFID cards that will be, that are currently at the schools, so we're encouraging families to attend the open houses so that they will not only get backpacks and supplies, but also their RFID cards. Call center, as we are, that's definitely an area that we've been working very diligent in, we have received training when it comes to customer service. Since our last communication that was sent out last week, I mean, we received several calls ranging from bus stop requests to alternate addresses to support families. We have an all hands-on-deck approach, so the team that we have in the transportation call center, as well as our partners with Zoom, are ensuring that we will answer and reply to all calls and make sure that we have callbacks. The depot that Zoom has is operational, it'll be ready on August eighteenth. They also have a maintenance shop, which they have recently secured, so we'll be ready, again, for operations on August eighteenth. We have had several stakeholder engagement meetings. We met with school leaders, we met with family support specialists, we met with athletic directors, we've had several meetings with our special ed department, English language learners, and other special programs. When it comes to conducting drive runs, we had our initial drive run that was conducted during freshman orientation the week of July the twenty-eighth. And as you saw earlier with some of the earlier presentations, we also are data-driven and results-driven. Just to kind of give an idea of what the data indicate and show, when we had the first week of the freshman orientation, and mind you, this was without the app present, and this was just really communications through email, we had a ninety-two point one percent on-time performance in the AM, ninety-nine percent PM on-time performance. The area that we're going to improve upon is the ridership. So we had ten point, roughly ten percent of the ridership, and that's out of four hundred and twenty-five at the peak, when we had a freshman attending the freshman orientation. Ten percent of those riders actually drove and rode the transportation buses. So definitely a call to, again, our parents and guardians to ensure that they download the mobile app or the parent app, so they can not only have traceability, but also be able to follow their students when they get picked up and when they get dropped off. So this next slide just provides just a summary and highlights of what has been discussed. I would like to highlight in particular to the back-to-school block party that occurred last Tuesday here at eight oh one. A lot of the feedback that we received was around the technology within the buses and really just something as simple as air conditioning. And it went a long way to actually see the buses, parents and students got the opportunity to get on the buses and just really, just really kind of get a glimpse of what's going to happen on August eighteenth. So as we have looked forward to, as we look forward to August eighteenth on Monday, some of the areas that we have really been focused on is providing school visits. We particularly focused on those co-located sites. We met with all of the school leaders at those sites where we were able to identify and review the drop-offs and pickup locations. In conjunction with the safety and security team, we have identified those safe stops. We have met with district stakeholders regarding utilizing the technologies. And again, that was mentioned earlier with our principals and other district leaders and staff. And then on August the fourth last week, we got the opportunity to meet the drivers. The drivers came in on August eighth. Dr. Borshid, myself, as well as our partners with Zoom, the transportation team, got a chance to speak to the drivers. And the drivers were committed. You could feel and sense the change in the air just in terms of not only their commitment to ensuring that they'll be here each and every day, but also their commitment to the district and making sure that the students, which will be the first faces that they see in the morning, they're welcomed with a smile. And again, just the consistency throughout the end of the school year. Now, this other part, in which we do have a video that we'll show, it really entails a call of action to our parents and our guardians. So we've just said that we have all the buses, we have all the drivers and monitors, and now the next step is utilizing the technology. So the call of action is for our families to not only make sure that you download the app, but make sure that your information in the focus system, your addresses, emails, phone numbers are up to date and accurate. That is how we're going to communicate to families.
So Mr. Watson, can you say that again? Because if your information is not accurate, or if you're not listed as a primary person in your student's focus, what will happen?
So if you're not listed as a primary contact in focus, you will not be able to, you'll be able to view the buses, but you won't have visibility in terms of your student, your child, as a parent or guardian. So the information that's listed as a primary, that is the number, and you will see it on the video, that you would more or less have to enter in, and then from there, you will have visibility in terms of, "Square Watson, my bus arrives at seven thirty AM, and my drop-off time is three thirty in the PM." So it is highly important, again, that, and this is in conjunction with our school-based staff, that if there are any issues, you contact the school, the schools will walk you through, the secretaries have been trained in focus, make sure you have all of your information in terms of registration, all the documentation, to make sure and ensure that come August eighteenth, you're solidified in the system, you're properly enrolled, and then the Zoom begins. So with that, we'll turn it over to watch the video. Thank you. So as we conclude this presentation, and as we prepare on August eighteenth, our priority is to ensure consistent, reliable transportation each and every day. We also want to highlight, and thanks to our Communications Department, in which we will be having signage throughout the city. And it's "Our New Horizons" is our motto, I think, for August eighteenth. There's a QR code, and we are, again, encouraging families to click on the QR code. When you go to the website, you will see the information in regards to the open houses this week, when they'll be conducted and the times. You'll also get the opportunity to download the apps for an Apple, Android, those users for, again, to download the app so that you will have, again, visibility and making sure that you are connected with Zoom as we transport your students from August eighteenth and beyond, as we search and reach new horizons in SLPS. So with that, we'll open it up for any questions.
I just want to echo that our drivers were extremely excited about being on new buses, being on air-conditioned buses. I mean, they've said they've been in the district for over thirty years, and this is a first. So great job to you and the task force.
Mr. Watson, thank you so much. I saw some of the trial runs, and I saw the buses when they were bringing the freshmen to the schools, because I woke up early in the morning, and I thought, and this has been, if you've ever been in education for a really long time, you know when school's about to start, because you hear those buses, you know, practice running, and that's what they were doing, so thank you. The buses are absolutely beautiful, I peeked inside. The other thing is, the students have an ID, and I just want to say, as a person that experienced having, you know, having to hold on IDs for a bunch of other kids, have them zip-tie those IDs to the bookbag, you know, punch a little hole in, or get a plastic sleeve and zip-tie to the bag so that they'll always have it. And the other thing is, and I don't know if Mr. Marston was prepared to do this, but there was a post that Mr. Marston sent, are you prepared to read it? I have it pulled up if you don't. I have it right here, if you don't mind, I'll read it. It says, "Hello, everyone," and this is on Facebook, "Hello, everyone, my name is Tanya. I'm a driver for the new bus company Zoom, but I'm a veteran school bus driver with twenty-eight years' experience. My mind would not allow me to forget what has been on my heart for weeks now. Parents, I know y'all are still optimistic about the upcoming year as far as transportation through St. Louis Public School District. Every time we turn on the news or social media, there's nothing but negativity. There are so many people looking to see St. Louis Public Schools Transportation Department, Zoom, drivers and monitors to fail. I'm here to let y'all know the devil is a liar from the pit of hell. Y'all relax and get back to y'all's normal schedule starting August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Your children are all going to be good this year. I don't know what the future holds, but it's going to be a successful year for all of us. I will not speak negatively regarding the past vendors, but as St. Louis Public Schools Transportation made a change that we all appreciate and grateful about this year. Parents, give us a chance to win the trust back. You know one thing? We as drivers monitor suffered a lot behind closed doors, no fault of St. Louis Public School Transportation, but we got the backlash of the situation. So when you're wondering about the performance of our work as an overall, you're hurting us too. It's a new start for all of us. We will win as a team. I hope everyone enjoys the rest of this weekend and be safe." And she put her name out there. So Ms. Tanya, if you're listening, we back you up a hundred percent. We have your back. Any additional, let's see, I don't know which slide came on first. Ms. Jones, and then Ms. Hubbard, and then Ms. Foster.
Yes, I'd like to just say, a dream come true. I've been, I was a parent in nineteen eighty, and I remember following the buses around and getting all that diesel smoke in my face and being upset and listening to the loud noises coming from the bus, and I always knew my child's bus because it had squeaky brakes. And I'm so pleased, you know, over the years, I've been begging for electric buses, and finally they're here. I'm so happy, so pleased. And I just want to thank everybody that helped push the electric buses, and when we asked for air-conditioned, they put them in there, because what is a bus ride without air? You know, in St. Louis, the way the weather is changing. So I just want to thank everybody, but I do want to ask about something that our president mentioned about the cards. So if a student loses their card, will there be a cost associated with it, and what can a parent do?
So we're going to provide additional information, but as of now, students, if they lose a card, it will be replaced by Zoom. They also have lanyards too, so to what you spoke to earlier, President, Dr. President, President, Dr. Collins Adams, there will be lanyards tied with the RFID cards, but in the event that they are lost, Zoom will provide replacement ID cards.
So on the card, are there photos on the card as well?
No photos. There's the student IDs, and it has a first name, last initial.
So will the district consider photos in their files, digital files or something, in case of emergency so the student can be identified?
So they do have ID cards with their photos on it, but to ride the bus, it doesn't have a photo on that card.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I also want to say that our electric buses are on the way. Zoom hasn't, is not electrified for us yet.
Okay.
Okay.
And my last statement is about the block party last Tuesday, which I attended. Nine o'clock, it was jam-packed. There were so many people here, and it made me think, I was glad the turnout was good, but that meant the need was great. And so the parents were around the corner when I pulled up, and it made me understand, or I understood deeply that there is really truly a need for parents to participate in their students' schools. The pack list was very small, the PTO, the PTA, what have you. Parents, please join. You just never know where this will go, and we need you, we need your participation. It doesn't cost a thing, and the schools need your help right now, because there are a lot of items that the schools need. Just say, for instance, when we went to Sumner and we walked up to the library, the students really needed some lounge chairs to sit comfortably. They were working on the building with the new funds, but there were other small things that a PTO or PTA could help with. And so, parents, please join your students' school. Don't just leave it up to someone else, and make our students priority one. So that's just what I wanted to say about that, because I saw the line, and everybody wants to get something, let's give something back as well. Thank you.
My question is, what happens, or how are we making work-throughs for parents? or how are we making work-throughs for parents who don't have a smartphone or don't have access to internet? Or don't have space on their phones because they haven't gotten a new one in a long time to download the apps? Because technology is great if you can afford it. But if you're not, you still don't know where your kid is. And I don't necessarily believe we need all that surveillance anyway. But that it's going to create some people who have greater reach and some that do not. And so I hope we have a plan for that.
Let's work on a plan for that.
And we'll share that with Dr. Borshade.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know for sure what I'm speaking. But when we gave out the phones through the, yeah, the T-Mobile phones. I don't know if they can add apps to it, but for people who have those, that can be a good solution.
We will make sure to get back to you on that, but I believe they will be able to. I'll confirm that and get back to you. Okay?
Foster?
Yeah, just a few questions, a couple of things just to like clarify and say plainly. So if parents are running into issues, updating their information into Focus to then get their bus route, the recommendation from the district is to contact their principal, school building, to then get support. Versus, you know, maybe try to call twelve numbers at the district. They don't really know which department to go to. It's best practice to just contact your school and principal, right?
100%. Thank you for bringing that up.
Great. Thank you.
We put that in a lot of the memos, and we know there's a lot of numbers. We're trying to eliminate confusion. The absolute best route for a parent to go is directly to their school. They have lots of staff members trained, lots of staff members that are available to support them in updating their information. It's more than just a secretary, so we really expanded the amount of people that can support with enrollment. We have iPads on site if they need assistance uploading documents, if they don't have a Wi-Fi internet at home. Yeah, we are fully prepared to support, and we try to put that in a lot of the memos that we sent to families to say, hey, we know it's a lot, but we promise we're here for you.
Awesome. Were you going to ask him, Dr. Borshade, or no? Okay, that is really helpful. So just clarification. That does not mean reach out to the superintendent and say you cannot find your bus. It is go directly to your principals. If they cannot help you, they will bring somebody from the district to help support you. Awesome. Thank you. We mentioned in the video specifically if parents can request to quote cancel a ride, similar to like Lyft or Uber, any kind of taxi services. Can you list those four reasons? I think I missed it in the video. And then the second follow-up question I have, does this mean that the bus will skip the stop? Because multiple students might be at a stop? Or does this mean that the bus driver knows to not account for, and this again may be a question for Zooms, appreciate it?
The bus driver should still stop there because others would be at the stop, but.
That is correct. That's mainly for special ed kids. The bus will not stop at that student's home, but for regular ed, it will continue to stop at all the stops. Because special ed's individualized, right? So if the student's not going, we won't, we won't stop, and it'll just reroute the driver to the next stop.
Okay.
But for regular ed, yes, it, they will continue to go to all stops.
Okay. Helpful, and thank you, Dr. Borshade. I know you were going to hop in and answer that for me. And then the last thing is just a request maybe from our staff is to, I just have requests for our like student data and privacy policy. That Zoom is like, that Zoom has their internal policy. It's a request that I have. Thank you.
Mr. Conover?
Thank you. Mr. Watson, you mentioned a couple of times different test runs, but you really only elaborated about the one with the forty, I think it was forty-two-ish freshman. Is that right? Can you say a little bit more about what test runs have occurred so we all have a good idea?
So test runs were conducted multiple ways. So when we began the routing initially, this was early part of the summer. Once those routes were completed, we had our transportation team to actually run those routes. And again, that's just to make sure that we were, in terms of optimization and usage of the new technology, that whatever we routed, we test rode those routes just internally. As we started to develop and finalize those routes, we did get that opportunity to again do it during the freshman orientation week, that was July the 28th. And then within the past two weeks, I believe, starting from August 4th, we've actually supported the students with special needs. They, the job training, we've had that opportunity to transport students. And Ms. Bor could definitely attest that that has been a success. So we've had several, several reiterations to give us a chance to kind of see how the technology works. So not only did we do it in-house, but we got the opportunity to see it firsthand in the last week of July and the last two weeks, starting August 4th, with our students with special needs.
Great. Thank you so much for elaborating on that. I wanted to also ask, on the slides that you had, it looked like the last big parent communication would have been August 1st, and you mentioned that there was going to be forthcoming parent communication. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
So with the mobile app, so initially, a lot of the information was sent out to our parents. We actually sent it out August the 5th. So that, that needs to be updated and revised. August the 5th is when we sent out that, hey, this is your student's bus stop. As we started progressing, fine tuning, optimizing, getting feedback, we sent out another correspondence on August the, last Friday, August the?
Eight, yes. And then another one goes out on the 15th.
And then we sent out another correspondence on August 15th. Now, what parents will see on August 15th is the actual route that the students or the bus will be taking to pick up their students. So similar to Uber or Lyft where you actually get to see the driver, where they are, where they're located. That's what will be released on August 15th. Prior to then, you only saw the information in terms of your bus stop. After August 15th, you'll be able to see not only your bus stop, you'll see the times, you'll see the route, and you get the opportunity to see your driver. To, to kind of add to another point, when it came to the RFID cards. The bus drivers will be able to see the student's photos if they are uploaded into our Focus platform, so they won't be necessarily on the card. But when the students get to their bus stop, the drivers using the technology, and Dr. Borshade, they always mention knowing students by name and strength, that the bus drivers will see that Square Watson is at the stop. You will see the picture if it's uploaded in our Focus system. And then if the, if the student does not have the RFID card, they still will be able to get on the bus. So we're not leaving any students behind.
This is what I wanted to ask you about. Okay, great. Yeah. Keep going, sorry.
Any students behind, but the driver will be able to more or less check them in, and the students will be able to onboard.
Great. Well, first of all, I'm glad to learn that you're taking our school buses to work every day, but. Yeah, let's talk about the RFID cards because big fan. But I just want to make sure that, so it sounds like they can still get on the bus without the RFID card. You know, people lose stuff all the time, so there's still a way for all students to get on the bus without that? They just can't be tracked, I think, is the.
So that is just correct. So they will still be able to get on the bus. However, the parents will not be able to, when they get onto the bus, generally you'll get a notification saying that, and I'm going to use me again, that Square would, Square, Square actually on the bus on the way to school, they will not get that notification, but they will still be able to follow the bus in terms of the drop off and pickup.
I got you. So with the RFID, they, you know, that's tracking with their kid. But if they don't have that, they can still, you know, if they know what the bus is, they can still follow the bus.
They will still be able to follow the bus.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
If you have a friend who takes your RFID card to the bus stop along with their own, does that let you skip school but look like you're on the way?
No. No. No.
I mean, I'm not suggesting it. I'm just trying to guard against it.
No, be, no.
Okay, sorry, Ben.
All right, I'll keep going. In relation to the RFID's, I would imagine, well, Mr. Morrison works in IT, but the rest of us might not be experts on exactly what's going on there with the technology. Is there a professional development or information that needs to be disseminated to staff, drivers, parents, et cetera, about that, and have we done that? And I could be wrong that we even need that, but could you just elaborate on that a little bit more?
We don't need, so with the RFID card, it is your tracking device.
Right.
And so there would not be any professional development for that other than the fact that you need this so that your adult, your parent, your guardian can track you. We do have FAQs.
Okay, that's the kind of thing I was thinking about.
Yeah, we do have FAQs on the website that just shares, if you don't have your RFID, the bus driver will still let you on the bus. They should still know your name and welcome you onto the bus, and you take your ride. And then the goal is now, what we would need to figure out is how long it would take to replace it if you misplace or lose your RFID. But it doesn't eliminate you from riding the bus.
And, and just as a logistics question there, if they don't have their RFID's, I assume there's like a list that the driver's checking?
Yes.
And then, yeah, great, okay.
Because they know who's at that stop.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you. Mr. Watson, I've been asking you since day one about how many drivers we have. You said 283? That's going to cover us?
Oh, that's more than enough.
Well, we, so we have 220 routes.
Right.
And we have 220, I think the last count, 225 bus drivers.
Oh, I thought, I saw more on the slide. My bad.
Yeah, we're still, we're still onboarding our drivers.
But we feel good about where we're at with the number of drivers for the routes. And I heard it was more than the routes, so that's usually a good sign.
Yeah, we're, we're working on our spare now, so we're, we're in good position.
Great.
I don't watch Mr. Watson's face. I watch the Zoom faces in the, in the audience, the supervisors out there that have a double vested interest in all of this, so thank you. The success and then the buses and all of that, so thank you.
I think just two more questions. So when things inevitably, you know, stuff's going to happen, somebody's going to get a flat tire, you know, all sorts of that kind of things are going to happen, how do backup plans work in those situations?
So that was one of the areas that we were really strategic about. So Zoom is providing spare buses. So there is a 10% spare buses. So outside of the 220, we do have additional buses that we would be able to accommodate. In case there's a slip, oops, or anything, we do have additional buses to carry out the mission and ensure that students get to school.
Great. That's exactly what I wanted to hear. And then just last question. I think there's been some varying information floating about all sorts of different spheres, about the state of the depot. It sounds like we're all good with the depot and everything is, we're on track for August 18th?
We're on track for August 18th.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We'll be Operation August 18th.
Okay. I'll just, I know I asked a lot of questions, but I just wanted to end, like, I can't emphasize this enough, and it's very clear that it's a priority here, but this is the thing we have to get right this year. And I know we're focused on it. I hear it. And I'm ready to see it happen. So, thank you.
We received that mission. Dr. Borshade has led, and we did this collectively. This was not, nothing in isolation. I mean, from the Transportation Task Force Committee Group that we started back when the development of the RFP, even through now, I mean, we've had that through line. We wanted to make sure that all stakeholders, all departments, school-based staff, and then we will expand this to our communities and our parents, that we'll all be on the same board and making sure that we're successful on August 18th.
That's what I like to hear. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you, Zoom, for being here and helping us with this.
Madam President, just another point of privilege. We have quite a few people watching, and so as I'm sitting here, I, I did encourage our cabinet members to submit proposals to the Council of Great Cities for a presentation. And guess what came through? Dear Square Watson, we are pleased to notify you that the proposal you submitted opting into transportation has been accepted for the presentation at the 69th Annual Fall Conference of the Great City Schools, scheduled October 22nd through the 26th, 2025, in Philadelphia. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Others, yes. Others want to hear what we are doing in St. Louis Public Schools opting into transportation, New Horizons. Good job. Good job.
Mr. Watson, one more question from Ms. Jones. Board Member Jones.
This is unrelated. It's, well, congratulations, yeah. Congratulations. But I just wanted to thank Deidra Thomas Mary for her contribution to the, to the block party last week out here. It was fantastic. And the food that she provided for the staff and the volunteers was wonderful. And I just wanted to thank her so much because she's really a great person and a great educator. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Congratulations.
That concludes my report. Can we have Dr. Brown?
Alrighty, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I will read the rules. Yes.
Awesome.
All right. Out of respect for our board members and their mission to conduct district business, we will continue to enforce guidelines for public comments. They are as follows. Citizens interested in commenting will sign in on the iPad between 6:00 and 6:30 p.m. before the board meeting. Do not hand documents directly to board members. Give them to the secretary at the far left of the dais. Commenters will take an available seat in the room, up to 20. Public comments will occur at the end of each board meeting. Information can be submitted to the board in writing. Each commenter will have up to three minutes to address the board. Each commenter was, must remain respectful and refrain from speaking derogatorily about anyone. Do not use their names. All comments will be allotted 30 minutes. If you are not called to speak, you may submit your information in writing or return to the next scheduled meeting with a priority number. Only one individual or group should speak to the same point on one topic. All right. Good evening and thank you, Board President, Dr. Collins Adams, Superintendent, Dr. Borshade, Vice President Hubbard, and all of the other hardworking members of the board. Protocol having been established just now, we will hear public comments from Mr. Bill Monroe on community participation, but I do believe that he is left. Next, we will hear from Ms. Alexis Perez Lane regarding the community.
All right. Hi there. I am here first and foremost as a former neighborhood school teacher. I differentiated for second and third graders whose abilities ranged across five or six grade levels with little support. My students dealt with many internal and external barriers to their education. But importantly, I'm also here as a foster parent whose children needed gifted support and also intervention. And we struggled at our neighborhood school to receive either one. These experiences actually led me to become an education policy researcher. So I just returned from a fellowship on Capitol Hill where I was working for a senator, and I introduced national educational equity legislation. And I came back home because I love these kids and these teachers and these families. And because I see the deep inequities that we have in this district as a fixable problem, but also because I can't stress enough the importance of having a strong public school system right now. After concluding my dissertation last year regarding the district's gifted and talented magnet system and the clear racial and socioeconomic inequities within it, I published an essay calling for a return to the community schooling model at the elementary level with gifted pull-out support. Instead, this is a research-backed, cost-effective, and equity-based proposal for restructuring. My second graders helped save their neighborhood school from closure in 2021 when they initiated a letter-writing campaign to the board on their own. I had taught them that through writing, you can advocate for yourself and others and more, people that are more vulnerable than you. You can also tell the truth, and above all, I taught them that you can be accountable for what you put in writing. In December, I sent an essay, my essay, to a hopeful leader. And when they wrote me back, they told me that they had been moved to tears and that their ideal model would be a community school with gifted pull-out support and explained the inequities of the magnet system in personal detail and shared that they knew that they would be fined either way, but others in the district would not be. After this conversation, I did something that I rarely do, and I believed what I was told. And now that they're a leader, I'm here to hold them accountable. Recently, a post that I published on school reform, which was research-based, I volunteer for this in my spare time for fun. I was surprised when this leader commented in. Uh, I was surprised when this leader commented and ignored seven hundred and eighty-five words about what is actually happening to actual kids in this district, for the fifteen hypothetical proposed words about abolishing the magnet system and equitably distributing those resources to all of the gifted and talented and wonderful students in our district. It's disappointing to me, but not surprising, that anyone would use the clear understanding of these inequities and the stories of our students uh, to gain power, but when they do gain power to put out the fire, they will willfully pretend that there is not one at all. All of our kids' success is bound up in each other's success, and know that when the very last neighborhood school closes, these beloved crumbling neighborhood schools, uh, so too will the most pristine magnet school that is the most exclusive in the state. Consolidation is an opportunity to reimagine the district with integrity and a bold and clear vision for equity, and I once again call on all of the leaders on this board to consider all of our students equally, with equal regard, when making these decisions, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Mr. Asher regarding CWSTLG.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, I remain uh, deeply, deeply disappointed with this board. I had a whole list of actions I was going to notify this board of, that we were going to take uh, for you, to push you all to set a literacy goal, and then you went and set a literacy goal. So now I have very little to say. And so I want to thank you for taking one of the first and, and most important steps in achievement, which is, which is saying where we're gonna go. And Dr. Borishadeh, I want to say that uh, myself and Coalition of STL Kids are here to support you now that you have a goal that we can support. And so with my understanding, that's about five percent improvement every year. Uh, New York City just posted a seven percent improvement uh, from last year, and so it's definitely possible. Um, there are challenges and, and, and the board will, will have to hold you accountable to make sure that that happens. Uh, but I think more importantly, uh, they will hopefully support you, and like I said, I pledge to support you and to work with you to make that happen for our kids. If you, because, because if you achieve that five percent, that's eight hundred kids. That's eight hundred kids, just five percent, every year. And so, um, I applaud you and thank you, uh, it, it shouldn't have taken this long to get it, but you know, hey, we have a literacy goal, thank you, um, and um, yeah, thank you. Um, there is, you know, behavior and attendance, I think needs as detailed a plan and benchmarks that I saw in some of the, uh, I think Dr. Dino's uh, presentation. Um, but yeah, we really want to work with you, and thank you for taking the first biggest step uh, and holding yourself accountable by identifying a goal that we can now push our kids towards, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Asher, we'll now hear from Ms. Velma Bailey regarding school closings.
Good evening, members of the board, um, as was stated previously, um, protocol all have, already haven't been established. I'd like to share with you something that's very um, dear to my heart. When I got interviewed for the appointed position on the board, I did share with you that I have a sixty-three-year relationship with this organization. When I started kindergarten in fifth grade, this district transported me and many members of my uh, neighborhood to eight different schools. We went to a different school, we got busted school every year for racial balancing, and they took black kids from the north side and sent us to the south side. And some of those things are still happening, the inequities that are happening to children who live on the north side of the city need to be addressed, and they don't need to be addressed by changing school, closing schools. That's the last thing this board ought to do, close any schools. You need to find a way to partner with organizations to keep these schools open, similar to what was done with some of the high school. We have homeless children or children that are in transition, there should be some housing and some schooling going on there. They're doing it at the Delmar Divine, not that it's some kind of um, brain surgery or scientist that you have to have to be able to do that. The kids don't have a home, they can fi, find somewhere to live in some of these vacant buildings, and there can be educational services for them there. We can have some similar to sheltered workshops for some of the special ed kids. We can have work for them, actual practical application of the skills that they're learning with these awards that you're getting, and maybe they could earn a living. And they can live in this community and not be violent, how about that one? I know that's, that's a kind of new concept, if you're black, and if, especially if you're a male, to live without being violent. But I think this school board could rise to the occasion, I really think you could. So start looking at some partnerships in this community that you can develop and put in these buildings, educate our children, keep our community sound, I don't want to move again. We were dislocated from the area around Skinker and Page after they built a brand-new school. We went to the school one year, ma'am, Cook School's been closed probably sixty years. It's been closed, and it's sitting there. And these children need someplace to live, they need somewhere to work, and this school district needs to be responsible for it. And this school board needs to look at people employed in this district. First of all, they need to be certificated, and if they've been acting in a job, they need to act themselves into school and get certified. The district pays for it. And next of all, I really believe that if you listen to your heart, you will realize that you don't want to close schools, because you don't want to close this community, because if you do close this community and we have less schools, we don't need as many school board members, how about that?
Last, we'll hear from Ms. Kay Squalls as a concerned district grandparent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I too wanted to talk about the school closings, because as a product of St. Louis Public Schools, I too was bused as a child. And um, if you don't have a strong background in your family, which we did fortunately, displacement really impacts a child for their lifetime. And we were bused because our neighborhood had grown, so they bused us from Harrison to Lowell School until Yatman was built. Um, we had a lot of fights, a lot of fights, because we were the first black children at Lowell School. I was the first grader. Um, any child that was from the second grade up, black child was put back a grade. So you have to be really careful about closing schools, and I'm done with that. Um, my question is, are, are schools education-ready for the children on August eighteenth? Because previously, um, some schools, they did not have their iPads, so they were not education-ready from day one, and mostly north-side schools. And I'm just stating a fact as it is, it's not pointing a finger, it's, let's deal with transparency. Um, another question I have, cell phones in the schools, what, is there a general policy? Or is it up to each school to decide? Because as a grandparent, I see that these kids are so engrossed in these phones, they have no social skills, some of them. So I'm, I'm really sort of in favor of leaving the s, cell phones at home or, you know, stored, whatever. And another thing is teacher retention. We in St. Louis lose a lot of good teachers every year. And my daughter is a teacher, my kids came through St. Louis Public Schools. I have five HBCU grads from St. Louis Public Schools, and they excelled. And they had the, what is it, the Magna Program? Where at that time, you could take it to the individual school. The kids could stay in their environment without being displaced over here and here and here, that's my concern. Um, oh, when, I want to go back to teachers' retention. I'm finding that our salaries are not conducive to keeping retaining your teachers. Could you please look into that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, this concludes our public comments for tonight.
Thank you, and certainly thank you for staying long enough to be able to um, join us for public comments. We do appreciate that. As we move on with our agenda, we move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items twelve point one through twelve point six six were discussed at our work session on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, and are up for vote approval tonight. Is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Marston, roll call.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry, Ms. Stuart Conover. You're like, I didn't see it.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, and maybe I just missed this at the work session, so I'll own that. But uh, twelve sixty-six, um, the last one, if you're scrolling real fast right now. Um, was this something that we considered rebidding out?
This is about Amoresco, Mr. Watson, can I have you come forward?
So it was a question about rebidding out the energy service contract?
Yeah, and just like more generally, right, we've had a couple of presentations about audits, and there's been a lot of that kind of stuff going on, and part of that is that we need to be focused on making sure we rebid and put out RFPs for our services, so I'm, I, there are circumstances where we can just extend, but I'm sort of curious what happened in this case.
So this was, um, uh, this particular, is it an extension request? Um, the work had begun, um, there was a lot of it with the equipment, making sure that the equipment, um, I think they actually, it's for Amoresco, so this was for the, there was some HVAC equipment that because of, of just the um, the time it takes to manufacture, um, send, deliver, and install, uh, is the reason why this extension request is, is being asked for this particular board resolution. And it was similar to train as well, um, a lot of it's just with the shipping delays, um, in this environment that we in with a lot of our HVAC equipment.
So just to try to summarize that a little bit for myself, in my understanding, that basically there's ongoing work, and it exceeded the contract date, and because we don't want to stop that work, that's why we're looking for.
That is correct, because the last day was June thirtieth, and we're just asking for an extension to complete the work.
Great, thank you.
Additional discussion? Mr. Marston.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes, Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved.
Section thirteen.
That was a record time, and uh, the most efficient approval of a consent agenda that we've had, so.
Well, thank you, Mr. Marston. Um, as we move to section thirteen items for discussion, are there any additional items for discussion? Section fourteen, items for information, fourteen point one to twenty-twenty-five Student Code of Conduct. Any questions, discussion?
So I would like to say that our Student Code of Conduct includes our um, device policy, and so before any action is taken on fourteen point one, we would just need to, um, it would be dependent on fifteen point two.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Borishadeh, it, on the bar, it says September tenth for voting on the Student Code of Conduct. Are you looking for us to do that after we vote on the cellphone policy today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to move item fourteen point one to an item for action, uh, specifically item for action, what would now be fifteen point eight, since we moved that one somewhere else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conover, is it second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Marston.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jones.
Now, I do have a question, along with this, uh, would we be um, asking for vendors to apply for um, perhaps providing cubbyholes or something for the new cell phones? Uh, if we're going to keep them in the classroom, or how will we take care of that? If we're going to develop a cellphone policy? Many of the schools already have a way of um, tr, keeping up with the phone, so in some cases, when you enter the building, there's a plastic baggie, and the plastic baggie is color-coded according to your grade level, and so many of the schools already have a process. There are some schools that may want to order some different things, but there's already a process in place. The reason that we're bringing this forward is because of the Senate bill that um, has been um, placed out there, and we need to prove it, we need to have it approved before school starts. So will the elementary schools uh, have this policy as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank. You're welcome.
Thank you, Board Member Jones, thank you, Dr. Borishadeh. I am, section fifteen, items for action.
We're in the middle of a motion for moving an item.
Mr. Marston.
The, the motion was made by Mr. Conover, who is, who seconded it?
Mr. Hikes.
Hikes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes, Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes. Items fifteen point one, Consultant Agreement Wyndham Group LLC.
I'd like to make a motion to refer item fifteen point one to the Governance Committee for a recommendation to the board.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Marston.
Catch up here, just a second. Okay, Ms. Foster?
So discussion Superintendent Borishadeh.
Yes, so.
Dr. Borishadeh.
In the meantime, that would leave us, that would create a gap for us.
So I'm happy to motivate why, I'd like to do this.
Okay.
Um, the, as far as I can tell, and I'm happy to be corrected on this, this is roughly the same contract, whistleblower contract that we've had previously. There were, there were specific recommendations in the Armanino Report that we needed to update and improve that process, and I don't know why we would be doing the same thing again, so that's why I was hoping we could send this to committee to have it reviewed and uh, updated for the upcoming school year.
Thank you for that information.
Yep.
So with that, from what I'm understanding, while we did have this whistleblower policy in place, um, I'm not sure that we were, as with all other of the policies, I'm not sure that we were using it correctly.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
And so now that there has been a, um, now that people understand how to use our whistleblower policy, we are using it with fidelity at this point, but in the past, I'm not sure that everyone understood how to use it. But if you know something different, let me know.
It's not so, I mean, I think there's been obviously incidents in the past in relation to the whistleblower policy that we don't need to necessarily get into, um, but my understanding, and I'm happy to be corrected, is that changing this into reflect a policy that um, was updated in line with the Armanino Report was very important finding of that report. And if we're not doing that, because it seems, at least on paper, right, even if it's the same policy and we're just treating it differently or something like that, that doesn't seem like we're in compliance with what we've been asked to do. Um, and that's my, that's why I would prefer to refer to committee, I'm not sure where that, there's certainly an operational question here. It, from reading the bar, it looked to me as though we've maybe already implemented this, and so I would just assume it would could keep going until we do some other resolution, but maybe. and so I would just assume it would could keep going until we do some other resolution, but maybe that's incorrect.
For as long as we don't have a gap, because I don't want there to be an issue where somebody wanted to use the whistleblower and we didn't have anyone in that space.
So I'm trying to figure out how we can handle that on the fly. Do you have any ideas, President?
The Governance Committee is going to meet again on September 4, but if you could amend that?
Yes. I think the kind of amendment that's here is where it's going to get complicated. So let me see if I can do my best.
So until the Governance Committee meets, until the Governance Committee can make a recommendation to the board, this will just carry over until that time.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Ms. McLaughlin.
You stood up, I'm sorry.
Right.
Would you like to come and say something?
If I may offer information, the Wyndham Group provides the CRA. So that's the group that answers the phone calls, responds to the emails, and if need it, would meet with the individuals to collect whatever complaint or concerns they might have. If we don't renew the contract, we don't have anyone in place to do that. I think what your concern is, is the whistleblower policy itself. Armanino did not discuss the CRA.
Oh, the CRA, okay.
As I understand, this part of the process. So certainly, the board could put it to the Governance Committee, that's their prerogative, to do that. We would just not have anybody to be able to answer the phone.
Right, we don't want that, obviously.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So the Wyndham Group is actually the receiving group of any whistleblower complaint, and would get, would get the, collect the documentation to be able to present it to go forward?
Correct.
All right, no, we don't need to have a gap in that, but we, I do believe.
I think I can get you an amendment on this, yeah. So here's what I'll try to do. I would like to amend my motion. Actually, I'm trying to think of how to do this, give me one second, sorry. Sorry, everybody. I'd like to retract my first motion. I think I need a second.
Second?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Okay, and now I'd like to make a new motion to extend, to amend the contract proposal here in 15.1, and extend the Wyndham Group contract until the September 10 meeting, is that our next?
September 4.
September 4, that would be the first Tuesday of the month, wouldn't it? To the September 10 meeting for consideration by the board. And then I'll make a separate motion on top of that, but that's for the first. So basically, a one month, or one month and a little less than a month extension of the current Wyndham contract. You want me to say that again, Mr. Marston?
I think he has it.
Do we need to vote on the retraction of the previous motion? So.
So you need a second, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Hubbard, second.
I just wanted to, oh, yeah, sorry, Ms. Hubbard, I just wanted to, I just want to make sure he has, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's to extend the Wyndham contract to September 4 and?
Till September 10.
September governance meeting, just.
No, sorry, till, to be clear, Mr. Marston, till September 10, when the board can vote on an updated CRA? That's going to be my other motion. One thing at a time.
Got it.
And I actually do need a second, if you would be so kind, Mr. Hikes. Because, Ms. Hubbard, I think you seconded the retraction, am I right? Yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
So that'll be added to the next Governance Committee agenda.
So that, that motion was to add it to the September 10 meeting agenda. Now I would like to make a motion to refer that agenda item to the Governance Committee on September 4, for a recommendation to come back to the board related to both the CRA and in general whistleblower policy.
Did I second too soon? I can do it again.
No, if you could do it again, that'd be great.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
Ms. Jones?
I appreciate the second look at this contract. I have received several complaints that said it's not working, and so I'm looking forward to it going before the committee.
Thank you. Mr. Marston?
All right, Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Motion carries. All right, item 15.2 Electronic Personal Communications Device Policy 5130. 5131.1.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Electronic Personal Communications Device Policy 5131.10.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just had basically two questions on this. Is this policy modeled off of the MSBA model policy?
Yes, this is what MSBA, yes, because when you look at 5131.10, MSBA is the one that recommended that policy number.
Perfect, thank you so much. And then, just as some voiceover, I don't know how to exactly ask this question, but what supports and information are we providing to parents around this policy? And then what professional development supports are we providing to the folks that are going to be responsible for this on the ground? Because it's going to be a big change, as we all know. And I know we have no control over having to adopt a policy like this because of our lovely state government, but just sort of want to know where we're at on that.
There has been a lot of engagement. I'm going to ask Dr. Dino to come up and talk about the engagement in terms of how we got here, the surveys that went out, and the feedback, the collaboration, go ahead.
Certainly, thank you very much. So we started by bringing together focus groups in the month of June. That included lots of staff that developed, that reviewed the law, reviewed some of our current practices, because the majority of our high schools and middle schools were already collecting devices during the day. So this was a practice that was pre-existing. Our Student Code of Conduct has always said that students may not have devices unless the school in some way has told them that it's okay. And so for us, it's, it's a change, but at the same time, it's in alignment with what some of our practices had been before. A survey was developed that we sent out to our entire community, and we got nearly 900 responses from families and staff around what they were looking for in terms of implementation of that policy. And the majority of respondents said that their first choice was for devices to be collected at the schools. And between staff and families, they wanted schools themselves to be able to choose what that collection method looked like, so that it best met and fit the needs of that individual school site. And so from there, we shared information with school principals, and they, during their back-to-school times with their staff over the course of these two weeks, are talking about what that means for their individual school settings, they're sharing that with their families. In Dr. Borishade's newsletter to families that went out on August 1, there was also information about what the school district was doing, so that we were in compliance with the law, as well as ensuring that each of our schools had the ability to develop collection procedures that met the needs of their schools.
We were taking all of that into consideration.
Great, thank you. Just for my part, I'm very glad to hear this is the MSBA policy and that we've been engaging with parents on this. No matter what we do on this, there's going to be some bumps in the road here, for sure. So, and I, I'm not a parent, there's many parents on this board, but I assume this is going to be a hot-button issue week one. So I'm just making sure we are ready and know what to do, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Conover, Dr. Dino, and Dr. Borishade. At the beginning of the school year, the Student Code of Conduct and all of the other aspects of it are reviewed. Do parents sign for that?
Yes.
They do sign?
They do.
They do, and within our new focus system, there's an electronic signature for that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes, along with this new communications policy, I wanted to know, with the problems that we've had with active shooters and danger in schools, will we make sure that every school has an intercom system in every room in case of emergency? Because this, as a parent or grandparent, I would, you always, you don't want your student to use the phones in the classroom, but you always want to feel like you can get in touch with them if something happens. And I felt that the day that that happened with one of our high schools, it was devastating. But, and as the parents were walking around, I'm sure many of them wanted to access their children. They wanted to talk to them. But if you have no way of talking with them in the classroom, then what, what is one to do? I just want to know, are we going to make sure that their intercom systems are working inside the classroom if we're going to take away the phones?
Okay. That is a very valid, real concern, and we will need to make sure that there is a PA system working in all of our buildings, just like when we are here and we have our drills. The PA system is what we rely on to hear one central voice in terms of what needs to happen next. And so it's my understanding that when they have drills in school, that they use the PA system to also communicate out. And so we just need to confirm, verify, and share that information. But when they have drills in school, so for instance, if there's a fire drill, there's a PA system that the leader of the building will get on and say, "Okay, there is a fire drill, and here is, here are the next steps that you need to take."
So I understand the PA system, but I'm just wanting to make sure that if a teacher or a student is in the classroom and something happens, that they can get on that system and communicate with the office or whomever.
They would need to communicate with the phone. Mr. Watson, I know that's part of the ELP, our Emergency Operation Plan, so you want to share information about how that will be communicated out?
So that is a part of our emergency operation plans. In addition to that, we've, we now have Raptor. And with the Raptor technology, we will be able to communicate to staff and parents using the technology. So there, I'll provide more information to Dr. Borishade to provide to the board in regards to, not only do our PA systems, but we will also be able to inform and communicate to parents, as well as teachers and staff throughout the buildings, through our Raptor technology.
Ms. Hubbard, and then Ms. Foster.
Since this is the law now, it might already be on our legislative agenda, but I would love to add stronger gun control laws in conjunction with no cellphones. So if, Mr. Conover, if, you know, let me know what I need to do.
It should, it should be on the policy agenda, but yes, thank you. And also co-chair, President Collins Adams.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Agenda item 15.3, Community Partners Places for People.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15.3, Community Partners Places for People.
Second. Discussion?
Thanks for pulling this, I have to excuse myself for a family conflict, so.
Mr. Marston?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Abstain.
Ms., Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes. 15.4, Community Partner, The Gathering.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 15.4, Community Partner, The Gathering.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Foster, your mic is on, is that, okay. Mr. Conover? Mr. Marston?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 15.5, Amend Board Resolution 07112325.
So moved.
Discussion? Mr. Marston, roll call?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes. And the motion carried? Item 15.6, St. Louis Public Schools Foundation MOU.
I make a motion to approve Item 15.6, the MOU with the SLPS Foundation.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Conover?
Yes, I just wanted to know, we were told at the work session that there's been updates to this MOU that reflect the last discussion we had of this MOU as a board. I was just hoping to get a few more specifics on that front, because I didn't see any.
I don't have any updates, I don't know that there are any. Dr. Borishade, or?
I just have information that the foundation shared with me, these things.
Oh, wait, is this a packet?
It's a packet.
Thank you. Oops, sorry.
Enough for all of us?
It's a packet, apparently.
It's a whole packet, thank you.
It's a whole packet. Pass one down to Ms.
It's three pages.
We're good here, yeah? Oh, these are allocation numbers that we've been asking for, okay. Interesting time.
Thank you.
Wow, glad we have so much time to review this. I'll just go ahead and say some concerns. So the board has been asking about the MOU for the foundation for quite some time, including whether or not stuff like this has been reported to the Chief Financial Officer. The former interim Chief Financial Officer denied that that was happening previously. We've asked for updates to the MOU, it doesn't seem like that's happened. I'm glad to see that there's more effort being made on this front for school funds, but I have significant concerns about our relationship with the foundation, and so I'm going to be a no on this.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one last thing, I would just remind folks that if you have close ties to the foundation in any way, that you should consider that when voting, thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, we've been open for discussion, any further discussion? Mr. Marston?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
No.
Mr. Hikes?
Abstain.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 15.7, MSBA Annual Conference, Approval for the Superintendent to Attend in October. Item fifteen point seven, MSBA Annual Conference, approval for the superintendent to attend in October twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion to approve Item fifteen point seven, approving the superintendent to go to the MSBA Annual Conference.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, is any of the board members going with you?
I'm, I'm definitely going. Um, there are some meetings scheduled for MSBA Board Presidents.
I'm sorry?
For the MSBA Conference?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Who, who else going? I'm, I'm just asking.
Mr. Hikes, are you asking about staff?
No, 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 no.
Oh, board members?
Just, just more bermazone.
I see.
Board members.
All right. Cause I, I'll probably put my name on the list, but that's why I was asking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion? Call for vote, Mr. Marston?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
And Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Item sixteen, Board Reports, I do just want to be able to give out some-
We've got a, uh, I think a fifteen point eight and a-
No, we don't, we already did-
No, we took that, we-
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, fifteen point nine.
I'm sorry, we do.
We have a fifteen point-
Yeah, we already have a fifteen point eight. No, because we replaced it, right?
We replaced it.
Fifteen point nine.
Is it nine, does it replace eight? Okay, cool, yeah, yeah. Confusion.
It's getting late. Board reports, I do want-
No, 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 we have to, I'll make a motion to approve the student code of contact.
Oh, we moved it down, that's right, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Marston.
Who, the second was from Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Yes. Second on the floor? Discussion? Mr. Marston, vote?
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
Yes.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
Board reports, um, the Yada Committee met on August fourth, and as we mentioned earlier, it will have a meeting in September, it's scheduled for a meeting in September, September fourth. Our Governance Committee met on August seventh. The Legislative Committee will meet on August fourteenth, and our Standing Committee on Budget Equity and Transparency will meet on August twenty-seventh. I do believe we have a real estate meeting on August eighteenth, and those will be all of the meetings for the month of August. They are posted on the website. That actually-
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I was gonna make a motion to adjourn, but-
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, we've actually gotten through the full agenda, and we need a motion on the floor to adjourn.
I do have, um, a comment to add for the Board Report section.
Ms. Jones?
Okay, yes, I have a comment about, uh, there have been a lot of conversations about, um, about closing schools. You know, over the years, I've been here a long time, and I've always been against it. I've always been, uh, in the mindset of, we need to be creative because I, we need to look at our buildings, our land as an asset, and, uh, do it in that manner. But no one has ever really addressed the issue of, uh, the destruction of our school buildings on purpose. Recently, Clay School was attacked, wires were cut. These things were done by professionals. They weren't done by someone that were, that was on drugs, like people try to create this ideal of some man coming off the street and, and getting a few pipes or something like that. They knew what to do. And just like with Northwest High School, the same thing. There were thousands of dollars that were spent on the HVAC system, and all of a sudden, someone comes up through the school and they take the school apart. There were, there was five million dollars allocated toward that school. We were gonna open that school up, where there was conversation about what Ms. Vama Bailey talked about, uh, homey, uh, housing homeless students there, as well as having instruction, CTE classes, that kind of thing. Every time we get ready to try to do something wonderful, there is an element that clearly has the money, because this is not a small-time operation, whomever this is, that's destroying the schools. If they did the same thing to Dunbar, they came in, they destroyed, they took the pipes out, they made the school flood, then they destroyed it, and no one ever saw anything, and there is no investigation. Now, this is thousands of dollars. Now, if it was somebody like me, the FBI, everybody would be on me, looking for me. I want people to find out who these people are that are destroying our schools and leaving them uninhabitable. So something needs to happen. And recently, we had, uh, the President of Board, Alderman, make a statement about all of the vacant school buildings, but no one talked about all the vacant buildings in the city of St. Louis. No one. The built, the city is full of vacant buildings, and we have a housing crisis. And this is one of the major problems of St. Louis Public School. Where do people live, where do families go? And no one, and I know if you have a family, you really wanna have property that you can raise a family on, not stacking families on top of one another like they did in Pruitt-Igoe back in the day when I was a youngster. That's not the way to go. We have plenty of land here, we need to be building houses, and the city of St. Louis needs to take the lead because they received millions of dollars from the federal government, uh, a few years ago because of the consensus that there were a lot of people who were suffering financially. So let's stop this nonsense about St. Louis Public School not doing their job and losing a lot of students, losing them because they have nowhere to go. When I was a lead inspector, I used to go into people's homes, they graced me with, allowed me to come in, and I would see, in a one-bedroom home, you would have three or four bunk beds in the basement. You would have people living in an attic where asbestos was, that kind of thing. No, I'm not gonna report them, they didn't have anywhere to go. And that's what you call homeless, homeless families. So I guess what I'm saying is, we need to really ask ourselves when we, when it comes down to this gentrification, because this city is being gentrified. We got the, just, you have to remember that, um, we have the, uh, NGA that's built up downtown and the new neighborhoods and the new people that they wanna come in. Let's include families. Families are the most important thing, neighborhoods, building them up. So let's not destroy our school system, they keep saying, get rid of the schools, blah, blah, blah. Everybody wants to come in and buy the school up real cheap. You want a hundred dollars, you wanna, we got how, we have schools that they were charging a hundred and fifty dollars for back in the day when they asked about the real estate committee. So let's do something different. People, let's help the schools. So that's what I have to say about that.
Oh, thank you, thank you. That, thank you.
Can I just share something that, um, I received an invitation from the mayor's office to work with the civic leaders' recovery advisory as it relates to the land and, um, of St. Louis? And so I'm going to be a part of that so that we can talk about and have St. Louis Public Schools at the table. Because as, as you just stated, we just need to rebuild in that space, all throughout the city, so that we can attract families to St. Louis Public Schools.
Additional comments?
It's, uh, a different topic, but I had the honor of attending the Sumner High School hundred-and-fifty-year anniversary gala on July twenty-sixth with about nine hundred other people whose school pride and support was on full display. Go Bulldogs!
Okay. What do you say next?
Hard to follow.
Lost for words after that, okay.
I'm gonna get them back. Number one, Ms. Donna, I so appreciate your passion about this, and people have to listen. So thank you so much.
She will say what other people are thinking, she just says it out loud and makes sure that you're paying attention to what's happening to our children. Remember when I said earlier, the noise in the room will always have to be about these children, always.
Okay, and then my other, I guess it's a statement, I don't know. I just want to acknowledge to the families, who've probably stopped watching by now, that the transition to focus was not seamless, and I haven't done it because I haven't found all my documents yet. Hopefully, before school starts, we'll get it done. But we're, I mean, I am here, I know Brian, also, we're here on this board having the same problems as you. And, um, once it's done, it's gonna be awesome. But I hope you have all your documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor? We can stay here all night if you want to.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting back into closed session.
Second.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Sure.
Mr. Hikes?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Marston, yes. Ms. Hubbard?
I guess so.
Dr. Collins Adams?
Yes.
We are adjourned at nine-
To closed session, thank you.
-fifty-nine, tattooed, closed session pursuant to the Rice Statutes of Missouri, six-ten dot oh-two-one, sections one through-